This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. I will say before I officially call a meeting to order, welcome to all of our currently 255 participants. My guess is that not every one of you is here for our coherent governance work session that will precede our reopening of schools. So I will let you know that that agenda item, which I'm sure most of you and all of us are very interested in discussing and hearing about tonight. I anticipate we will reach that agenda item around somewhere between 8:15 and 8:30. Obviously, you are always welcome to join in and viewing and our meetings, but just letting you know that it is not the first agenda item if you hadn't had a chance to look over the agenda yet. At this point, it is seven o'clock and all of our members are here, so I will call the meeting to order. Nina, will you confirm our compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call for quorum.
Commissioner Lyons. All right, Commissioner Lyons.
Hearing you, Commissioner Lyons. And now it looks like you're muted.
I can see he's logged on and his mute is turning off and on, so we'll come back to Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Zur.
Here.
Commissioner Bika.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, those of you that are able and willing, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, with the reopening of schools proposal on the docket, we have 13 members of the public signed up for public comment. I want to first express my gratitude for coming and joining us tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. In order to keep the agenda moving and to hear your comment directly before we start to discuss the proposal, I would like to ask for one of the board members to motion to suspend our normal rules to move public forum to directly in front of the proposal.
Some.
I will take that as a move by, let's say, Commissioner Zur and a second by Dr. Johnson, if that's okay with you, Dr. Johnson?
That is fine. Thank you.
All those, let's do a roll call just for clarity here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Bika.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
We'll move on to our board and administrative reports. We will start, as always, with the superintendent's reports. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordine, Commissioners, Executive Team members, and guests. Because this meeting is extremely critical this evening, this would not be a typical superintendent's report of three to five minutes. The time reserved for this really should go to our guests this evening from the Eau Claire City and County Health Department and for our board to comment and ask questions of administrators as well. What I would like to say, however, is that over the last two weeks, I've been extremely impressed by the tireless work ethic and positive attitude and attention to multiple stakeholders by the reopening of schools task force. This is extremely difficult work in a crisis situation. I've never heard complaints or frustration from our leadership team, our system leaders. I appreciate the work of the reopening of schools task force and over 110 stakeholders, groups of administrators, staff, parents, community members, health department personnel, and students. We do not have the time to recognize them individually this evening, but I can certainly say thank you. Finally, I've heard from many parents, community members, and staff in the district since Wednesday evening, and have tried my best to respond to all communication. We want our students and families to know that we're here for you. This will be a school year unlike any other, and we will need to be very flexible and adaptable as well. I've received many inquiries and comments from staff. We're listening, compiling, and will be sharing information often with you. Many more FAQs and answers are coming weekly from our district office, and we wish to separate the FAQs for staff from the families and community because they are so different. I care deeply about our staff here in Eau Claire. Even though I'm new, I've had personal relationships with some of you for almost 30 years. I've even taught with some of you at Memorial. Our administrative team and other members of the task force have the same types of relationships with you, and we all know that there is a strong sense that we're in this together as a district. We will be the best we possibly can for our students and for each other. Dr. Nordine, I will have one more information item later on after the employment report. Thank you.
And I've got a particular note here to actually remember to do that in the proper order tonight, so hopefully I will get there. And just wave your arms frantically if I don't. For my part, I will also keep the board president's report somewhat short tonight, but since our last meeting, Dr. Bika, Commissioner Clements, and I finished our WPN book study despite the best intentions. We were able to have engaging conversations with board members, principals, and teachers from several other districts, and we also met separately to discuss the implications of the book for here in ECASD. I think I can speak for my colleagues to say that we look forward to sharing our learning with the rest of the board, as well as the district, as we work toward increased equity in our programs and practices. And of course, over the last few days, like I'm sure almost all of you who are here listening tonight, I've been digging into the information around the district reopening plan. And I want to take this brief moment to thank all of you who wrote to me and to the other board members who share your thoughts and insights and, of course, your concerns. We know, as Mr. Johnson said, that tonight will involve difficult decisions, and they will be, whatever decisions are made, they will not make everyone happy. But I want you to know that your input is important to me and to us as a group. At least one person wrote in their message to me that they would be surprised if I had continued reading to the end of their email, and I want to assure you that I do, in fact, read every email through to the end, as I'm sure do all of my colleagues. So thank you for participating in the process tonight. At this point, we'll move on to our committee reports, and as has become our tradition, we will start with budget development. Commissioner Harder.
Good evening. I have a budget report tonight this week, but hope to have one in the next meeting.
Sure. Thank you. Let's go to Demo and Trends.
Good evening. This is Kim Kohler. We have not met since the last update to the board. In fact, we'll be taking July off from meeting, and we'll be meeting again in August.
Thank you. Leap.
Good evening. This is Jim Schmidt, Executive Director, Teaching and Learning. And like Kim mentioned, our team as well has not met since the last update to the board, and next meet's on September 8th.
Great. Thank you. Policy and Governance met on July 8th to continue our work to focus on equity and anti-racist policy in our district, and we had a good conversation around our seven identified areas of interest for policy review. We decided to look first at our hiring practices, as well as curriculum and intellectual grouping, including how to effectively move away from tracked classes. Our next meeting is not yet scheduled, as we are, we have been juggling Commissioner Clements and my own summer schedules, as well as Dr. Johnson's fall teaching schedule at the university. To find a consistent meeting time, we will have that meeting scheduled, the next meeting scheduled soon, where we will be discussing proposals for how to move forward with those two areas of interest, talking about two policies that are ready for review by Policy and Governance Committee, and then pending the results of our work session tonight, considering what our next steps should be moving forward for coherent governance. I look forward to bringing updates to you as they are available. Thank you. Let's go to Dr. Johnson for the legislative update.
Thank you. I just have two items. So the Wheeler Report publishes its Part V going forward in a series of K-12 education during COVID-19, and it highlighted just some of the concerns after talking with school district superintendent, as well as teachers and staff, and some of those highlights included the decision makers involved in this process of returning to school, internet access for students, overwhelming staffing concerns affecting all school districts, and then the impact on school districts' third Friday count and its implications as it relates to funding and enrollment. And then, how much does the DPI know about the state's commitment to the educational budget? And then liability concerns related to reopening, and then another big issue throughout the state of Wisconsin, the special education concerns as it pertains to maintenance and delivery of services to our students with disabilities. And then the other piece, maybe it's known on a national level, so the United States Senate will begin debate this week on a fifth coronavirus response bill. It is expected that there will be some amount appropriated for education. What that amount is, they're not sure. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards have sent letters requesting support for funding to our two senators. Thank you.
And with so many of you from the public listening tonight, I will urge you to contact your state and federal representatives. Ron Kind is our current representative, Tammy Baldwin and Ron Johnson in the Senate, and tell them that we need support to be able to do our schools the best way that we can. This is a difficult decision tonight. We have so many of you listening. I urge you to call or email your legislators and ask them to support public schools so that we can support your children and all of our families, my children as well for that matter. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The board considers the consent resolution agenda without discussion as one vote. We have received information at a previous meeting. If any board member would like to pull out an item for discussion, please note that as I read them, and we will do so. On the consent agenda tonight are the minutes of July 6th, 2020, gifts in the amount of $11,873.99 for the period of June 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020, payment of all bills in the amount of $8,831,734.29, and net payroll in the amount of $3,863,949.52 for the period of June 1st, 2020 through June 20th, 2020, human resources, employment report, insurance renewal, annual approval of curriculum standards, bids for installation and maintenance for MHS solar projects, and appoint school board committee assignments. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Clements, second by Harder. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Bika.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
All right. For several months, we have been planning a workshop on coherent governance. This has been a work of the board for quite some time now to continue to move step by step toward potentially instituting a new governance model that will help define our relationship to the district and how we act as a group. As, if you'll remember, several of us participated in a coherent governance 101 virtual meeting a few weeks ago. And tonight, we are excited to have with us two members of the Chippewa Falls School Board, Kathy Strecker and Sharon McWham, to introduce all of us as a group to some of the concepts of coherent governance and field some of our questions for us. We have about an hour dedicated to this tonight, and so we'll take the time that we need up until about 8:15 if necessary, and then we'll go to our public comment. Before I do that, you did not wave your arms wildly enough for me, Mr. Johnson, but I want to turn that back over to you before I get too far ahead of myself. I know you have announcements today.
I'm a little too moved for that, Chair Nordine. I'm not going to do that to you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce our new principal at Meadowview Elementary. Kathryn Kit Shifobon graduated from UW Eau Claire in 1989 with a Bachelor of Science in Comprehensive BiEd with an emphasis in health. In 1995, she also earned her master's degree from Winona State in Educational Leadership. She became a national certified, a board national certified teacher in 2012, and she holds licenses through the DPI as a principal and a physical education teacher. Kit started with the district immediately after graduating from Eau Claire. Her first role in the district was a secondary physical education teacher. Between 1990 and 2012, she worked with students between sixth or 12th grades at South, North Star, Memorial, and North. In 2012, Kit moved into the role of assistant principal at North Star Middle School and has been in this position ever since. Welcome, Kit, to Meadowview Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. That's as close as I've gotten thus far to hitting that at the right timing. Now, we will turn it over to Kathy and Sharon and have a bit of time to consider coherent governance, which I happen to think has a lot of ties into the work that we're going to go on to after this. So Kathy and Sharon, welcome, and we look forward to your presentation.
Great. Thanks. Now, this is Kathy Strecker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I was having a little bit of technical difficulty earlier. Sharon, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Well, thank you for inviting us to share some information on coherent governance. Just by means of a little background, I have been on the Chippewa Falls School Board since 2015, and I was appointed at that time and then have since been re-elected. And I joined the board right as they were adopting coherent governance. So I have never worked on the board under a different model, so that kind of, you know, it's kind of difficult sometimes when people, when you're in these presentations or at seminars or with wisdom sharing, they always say, oh, well, we used to do it this way or that way, and I can't speak to that. So I really am a big advocate of coherent governance. I think that it streamlines the work and the board, everybody knows their roles, and the board can effectively govern because, you know, it's determined, laid out just by the basic, how the model works, that everybody's there and they know what their job is. And you could focus on student achievement and, you know, not be mired in, as we call it, down in the weeds with the operations of it. So that's what I say, I just wanted to say that, the introduction, that I only know coherent governance. Sharon, would you like to say a few things?
Sure. Kathy, just to give a plug for the Chippewa Chamber, is also the membership person with the Chippewa Falls Chamber of Commerce. So she's actively involved in our community. I'm Sharon McWham. In my real life, which lately with hiring a superintendent and all the meetings that we've had, feels like it's the school board, but in my real life, I'm an assistant corp counsel with Eau Claire County, and I handle all the juvenile cases, which includes tips, gips, TPRs, and all the truancy actions. So I'm, I also do mandatory reporter training for your new employees. So I know many people in the, that work in the Eau Claire School District, and I got on the school board in 2018, so I too only know the coherent governance model. However, my youngest daughter, Emma, was the school board rep, and she was on there when they were just going into the coherence governance model. So that's kind of my history with the board. Kathy is the clerk, and I'm currently the vice president. So that's a little bit about us.
Okay. Thanks, Sharon. So I have, I'm going to be sharing my screen with everyone, and so someone on that end, let me know if it's working or not working.
Yes, we can see your screen, Kathy.
Yep. Okay, great. All right. So what this is, is this is a presentation that the Chippewa Falls School District did at the State Education Convention this past year. And we chose to focus on how, what living in the world of coherent governance is. And like we had said, this is kind of, we can't compare it personally to other models, but this is, this is the, basically the fundamentals of how it works in actual practice. So let me just ask you quick, you had said you are, you had given an assignment, correct, to the board members to read the first three chapters, I believe you said, of.
Of coherent, of, oh, now I've misplaced my book.
Oh, wow. They're even holding up their books. Good job. They did.
Good governance is a choice. Correct. Yes. And so Linda Dawson and Randy Quinn are authors of that, the authors generally of the whole coherent governance model. And we actually just did a book study on the art of coherent governance, which is a subsequent book that they've written on it. So there, you know, the whole, the whole basis of it is, like I said, that the board knows its role and the superintendent knows their role, and it's very clearly defined. So you can, you can get down to the nitty gritty, and as I say, the three dimensions of governance are determining the progress, defining the expectations, which that, this is what the role, and then developing a systematic program sampling of, you know, what that actually looks like in practice. And as I'd stated, the history of it is, the board, before Sharon and I got on the board, had decided that, you know, they looked at it for several reasons. The district was, at the time, underachieving, and there really wasn't a whole lot of coherence among the board and the administration. And another thing that was, was an issue is the lack of trust. And trust is, you know, the cornerstone of this model. You have to know that each of the parties involved, that each, everyone is, you're trusting in the information that you're being given by the superintendent, and that is, it's key, and it's wonderful when it works. So again, this, defining the expectations are what you start with. And we have, in our district, we have done this a number of ways. We have what we call a school showcase, so that at each board meeting, there's a different school that is highlighted and a different program that that school is doing. And this is at all levels, elementary, middle school, high school. And that is incorporated into the agenda for the month, and it also ties into which policy it is that we are monitoring that month. So what it is, is we've got the students in front of us, and in their own words and in their own experience, they tell us how it is, that, what they're working on or a program that they've done, and we get to actually interact with the students and ask questions. And it's just, for a lot of the board members, they end up saying that's kind of the highlight of the meeting, was to see the specimens live in action. And we do something called learning walks. Now, obviously, in our current situation, we had to suspend those, which was really disappointing, but we set them up too. Again, it goes, it's done in conjunction with which policies we're going to be monitoring that month, but we will go into, we do them, alternate the mornings or afternoons once a month, and whoever is able to attend, go into the school so we can see, again, what is, you know, boots on the ground, what's actually happening. It's been a great experience. So the, and each month, we have a calendar. Our annual board, annual board work plan is set up and voted on and passed at the June meeting every year. And it's a roadmap. It tells you exactly which month you're going to be monitoring which policy. And in those monitoring reports, and Linda and Randy have wonderful templates and structures, and they help you define what it is that's really important and the things that the board needs to look at to see that, again, it's, you know, the outcome is student achievement, what are the results that we're looking for. And we go through each of those different ones each month, one or two, depending on, some are, some are very, very lengthy and others are not quite as lengthy. So we monitor whichever one we're monitoring that month is something that we have had a chance to see, say, in person. And it's quite, you know, it's, it's a very well-defined, structured process, and there's no surprises, and there's, you don't get off track. You're there to do the job. You know which monitoring report it is. You're given the information in your board docs ahead of time, so the board members have time to delve into it and, you know, get, have their questions ready. It's very good to be able to see it ahead of time, know what they're, what the artifacts that the superintendent is putting forth, saying this is how we're achieving our results. And you, it's basically just, you are either, you meet your expectations or you, the expectations are met with them. Sometimes you have, you know, pieces that are, you know, didn't quite make the measure, but then they'll say what they're doing to rectify that, or the third is that they've failed to meet reasonable progress. So those are, those are kind of the only choices. So again, it's very well-defined, and this, life goes on quickly. This is a picture of how we operate, except some of the players have changed. We, as you all know, we have a new superintendent, and then we also have a board member who has been, did not run, Amy Mason did not run, and so we have a new board member, Kevin Swift. But this is, this is how it aligns. It's, you know, board president and superintendent have, it's a one-to-one communication. And, you know, you could think of it as teams. This team is the administration. This is the board. But there's just one single point of contact, which is, it's good because it keeps things very streamlined and, you know, very direct. There's basically four components to the governance model and the policies, the results, and the operational expectations, governance culture, and then the board superintendent relationships. So it's, these, again, these monitoring reports that we do each month at our meetings are set forth, and we are given specific examples to show how the administration and how the superintendent is making reasonable progress in that area. And those results, the results are developed by the board, so we know what we want done, and it's up to the superintendent and then the administration under the superintendent to figure out the how. We know what we want. They figure out how, and then outline each of those in the operational expectations. And there's also a governance culture, which defines the expected outcomes. And all of this then is how the board superintendent relationship is, you know, it's black and white. When it comes time to do the superintendent evaluation, it's all objective, and it's based solely on the district progress as measured in each of these monthly monitoring reports. So it makes quick and easy work of that. And again, the determining progress, you know, are we really getting to where we want to be as far as student achievement? Because that's, that's our, you know, ties back to our mega result and our strategic plan is student achievement. That's what we're in the business to do, is, you know, have students achieve. So we determine that progress, but these monthly reports, which focus again on the different expectations or outcomes, and the administration prepares that report, and the superintendent will introduce which report, monitoring report is, and the administrator who's responsible for authoring that report. And that administrator then presents the data to the board. And then the board takes it upon themselves, the next step is they take, they accept the report, and then at that time, they can ask any questions. take, they accept the report and then at that time they can ask any questions that they feel are, you know, they may not understand exactly how this ties into the, the progress. And the administrator is there then to answer all of those questions. The data artifacts are presented to the board that, that actually show the district's progress and how it aligns with what the board is expecting of them. So it's, it's, you know, I say it's, it's a roadmap that the board is, that, you know, you're comfortable with it. Sometimes things change, tests, you know, different test results come in and different state, the state assessments may change and things like that. Well, you know, then the onus is on the administrator to let the board know that this is the measure that we use, this is how we looked at it, this is how we interpreted that data, and this is the outcome. Now, again, we may be that we made reasonable progress, but there are some exceptions. And they'll define what those exceptions are, and we may ask for a re-monitoring of it in less than one year's time. So it's, it's really, it's really, it's the board that sits and, and, you know, they listen, they take in the, the data, they take in the reports, the findings, and then returns it back to the administrator, to the superintendent, and the superintendent can, and has the administrator, that's the author of it, define, you know, say, this is what we're doing, this is, there's some changes we need to look at, things like that. But, you know, it ultimately, it ultimately is the summation of the work that's done throughout the year. And again, that then turns into the superintendent evaluation at the end of the year. So I will stop yammering and turn it over to Sharon at this point. And I assume, Tim, you want questions at the end, is that, is that correct? Is that fine?
That would, that would be fine.
Okay.
This is just a very small snippet of one of our reports that we look at, but it kind of gives you an idea, depending on which board expectation is being looked at. And OE nine, you'll see, is communicating with the board. So one of the provisions is treating all members equally and assure that all members have equal access to information. That's the board expectation. And then the administrator, whichever one is in, in, responsible for that, is, lists different provisions under that to show the board that whether or not they believe they've made reasonable progress. And as Kathy said, in some instances, because these reports can be three, four pages long, you know, they've made reasonable progress in several areas, but there's a few noted exceptions. There are some times where we're not, we find they're not in compliance, that's rare, thankfully. But, and when the administrator presents the report, we have the opportunity to ask any questions. There have been times where we've asked for different kind of data or different kind of information to be measured. So, and Kathy had talked about the work plan that we just approved in June. And we have two standing committees. We have the coherent governance committee, well, and the policy committee. And then we also have a communications committee. So the coherent governance committee is the one who develops the work plan. It's usually, we use, so the plan is developed, so we get to every single monitoring report throughout the year. And so each month, we're looking at a monitoring report and an OE report to go over. And the administrators do a pretty good job of giving us the data and we have an opportunity to ask questions while we're looking at it. Kathy, can you change to the next screen, please?
Yep.
Because it's your screen, so I can't do it.
Yeah.
And this just kind of also gives, when it's showing a sample monitoring report about academic, academic performance in math, which is one of the areas that we wanted to focus on, it'll show how our expectation is that students will graduate academically, prepared for post-secondary education, personal success, and financial sustainability. And they break down the different academic areas. And then we get data on how the percentage of students has either increased or decreased. Just to make it easier for us, I believe, they put it in green when it's a good, and they put it in red on the reports when it's, it's a negative change. But, so it's pretty easy to skim over them and, and determine how we're doing. Our staff does a really good job at preparing these and providing us the information. And like Kathy said, we get them ahead of, ahead of time, when we get the board docs access. So we can look at them ahead of time. And, you know, in all your spare time, I'm sure you have nothing better to do, but you would have access to our public agenda information and these would all be on there. So if you wanted to look at our work plan from, that we approved in June, you could be, you could go back to that meeting, you could look at examples of the different, different reports that we look at. We also have all our policies online. Again, if you're having trouble sleeping at night, you might want to read those, but either way, they're, they're good policies, it's just there's quite a few of them. So you would have access to that kind of information online on our website. And as, this is kind of what Kathy went over already as well, is the three pillars that we have. So my favorite part is the school showcase, but we'll get to that, we have a slide for that later. So, and this is just a brief snippet of the annual work plan. Like I said, we get through everything every year, so we usually look at them at about the same time. Ironically enough, this month, we are looking at the emergency succession plan for superintendent. And since we just went through all that, I think we'll probably be able to take a look at how well we actually followed those kinds of things. So we, we've been using probably, I would say, the similar work plan since I've been on the board. I don't know about Kathy, she's nodding her head.
Yeah, yes, yes, it's very, yep, very similar.
It's very similar. And again, it includes the results and outcomes each month. And my favorite part is the school showcases that we do. Unfortunately, since COVID hit, we haven't been able to do that, but we have representatives from all, all of our schools come in and do that. We had some grade schoolers, I can't remember, I think they were fourth graders, and I don't remember which school they were from, but they made the board do math problems. And admittedly, we didn't all get them right because they were story problems. And the kids thought that was pretty doggone funny. But I've also been very impressed with the different kind of learning methods that people use. I know all about the different kind of seating that's available in school classrooms, and it's mostly because of, of those school showcases that we have. The learning walks, as Kathy said, we do those once a month for any board member that can make it. In the last couple of years, we've decided to also include like the district office building as part of the learning walk, or our student services part or human resources. So we've tried to expand, expand what we have done a little bit. And the executive summaries we get every month from the superintendent. We also, like I said, had a communications committee. Before I got on the board, they used to do what was called coffee with the board. And the board members would be at one of the local coffee shops and people could come in and ask any kind of questions or just have a chat with the board. This past couple of years, we've decided to take a more proactive approach. And we have gone out into the community, to the various organizations like Rotary or Kiwanis, or we went to a group of realtors and we did a presentation on the different kinds of things we have available in the schools. A lot of people who didn't have kids in the district didn't know that we had mental health services available at school and those kinds of things. So we went out into the community to try to get more, more exposure and more collaboration with our community. So we also did this past year, just in, well, in February, we did a community conversation, which was kind of revisiting what we did back in 2014. And we had about 135 people from all different kinds of organizations and businesses and the police department, et cetera, who came to that to try to help us define what our goals should be. So I think the next few are just photos of the learning walk and the book study. We did do a book study, like Kathy said, on the art of governing coherently. We, some of us have also gone to different trainings that Randy and Linda have done, and we've had conversations with other boards that, that do use the coherent governance model. And what I can absolutely tell you is, you know, the single point of contact is really the superintendent. So when people come for the board, I mean, so when people... The executive committee that's doing that, and then we get a report back. So it's really much more of a fly, flyover makes, makes it sound like we're not involved, but it's much more an, an oversight kind of approach as opposed to the day-to-day operations. We trust our, trust our superintendent, our administrators and our staff to be able to take care of that. And that's kind of coherent governance in a nutshell.
Yeah, great. So I guess, depending on what, you know, what are some questions you guys have in terms of what you've already been presented with? And I know, Tim, you had said you were, some of you attended the 101 session. Is there, are there questions?
I will actually start. You talked about that one of the reasons that, or one of the things at the onset of coherent governance was that you felt that there was a lack of trust. I presume that's between the board and the admin team, or was that community? Where, where was that lack of trust?
Well, I think it was, I've gotten feedback, do I sound weird to you guys?
You sound okay to me.
Okay. That was, again, folklore. I mean, we, we, we heard that from the previous board, the members that that was, that was part, part of the reason that they were looking for a model. And the, the gentleman that was at the board, the board president at the time was attending the National School Board Association Convention and had been introduced to coherent governance. And they were, it just struck a chord with him at the time, saying that that was, yeah, there, there seemed to be this, these, the turmoil of the, the, the board did not quite know what was going on and the superintendent was, you know, and, and I'm sure that had a lot to do with personality at the time. But it was just one of those issues where they felt like they needed to cement it where they knew, the board knew ahead of time what the superintendent was going to be presenting them and the, and the superintendent was not, you know, surprised by anything that the board might be thinking or coming up with. So I think that, that the, the, this model gives a tremendous amount of autonomy to the superintendent. And if, you know, to, to make it work, it, they have to realize that the superintendent is the single point of contact and, and is given a lot of, a lot of autonomy, but also there's, 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 you know, along with that comes the accountability. So the buck stops there with the superintendent. You know, this is, this is what the board wants to see as far as progress. And here, you take, you take the ball now, superintendent, and bring it, bring that back to us and show us that that's what's been done.
So how have you found that the model has helped to build that trust? I mean, certainly we are all very excited about Mr. Johnson joining us as our new superintendent, and we look forward to all of the work that he's going to do to move our district forward. How have you found that coherent governance has helped you build that trust with the administration?
I actually think that because the superintendent and then the administrative team have the ability to focus on what they really should be focusing on, like, you know, student achievement or whatever it is that, that we're looking at particular month. I think that not having every single board member, and I'm, I wasn't on the board back then, so I can't really speak to that, but, you know, I really think that it allows the superintendent and their team to really use their strengths and the board to use their strengths and the policy in being accountable to the public, because we're elected by the public, and also to make sure that everybody's staying in their lane and doing what they need to do. So the board isn't necessarily interfering with, with what kind of math testing that the, the district is using. And I'm not saying that you are either, all I'm saying is that I think it allows everyone to use their strengths and focus on the most effectively, the way they can better change, if anything, that would needed to be, need to be changed. And I think having that single point of contact, like the superintendent, and then everything trickles down from, from the superintendent and then the board president, is really, really important because, I mean, we have, I think you guys have seven people on your board as well, right? Yeah. You know, seven, seven people have seven different ideas. And so that doesn't, that's not to say that we don't have the ability to, to project, to give our feedback. I mean, the superintendent welcomes that, but I think it really helps, helps keep the dissension down. And I personally think right now we have a pretty cohesive board, so there isn't really much dissension. But if you have the single point of contact and everybody knows what their roles are, I, it makes it, I think it makes the board more effective.
Well, and, and the ultimate goal are the results. I mean, that's, you know, that's what I mean, is it, it makes it, so, so the, the trust is there in terms of, it's sort of, it's, it's a given because it's, these, this is what we want as the board. You know, these, these results, where our four results policies, very well-defined. And, 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 and I must say, to each, you know, where I say Linda and Randy have a template, there's, there's, there's always room. You, you take these and you interpret, and you make the policies as they suit your district. Your, you know, they may be different entirely or, you know, somewhat than ours, but the construct is there. That's what they give you when they, they give you their, when you're, you're using this model, is it's the, the building blocks. And then you, and built into that, you know, baked into it is the fact that you, the board, are trusting the superintendent to turn around and give you the data, the artifacts, the things that prove that this is our, we're, we're going to achieve our student results.
Thank you. I'll open it up to my colleagues now for questions, in order of whom I saw on muted, I have Commissioners Lyons, then Beeka, then Johnson. So Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I, I wanted to pick up on the oversight versus operations. And I, I just wanted to, I was thinking even strong, mature boards can sometimes get off the rails and maybe getting into the operations. And I was wondering, sometimes that the operations are things, you know, best left to the superintendent. And I was wondering if there's any advice that you might have when you might see board deliberations kind of getting off into the weeds and, and you hold, you hold each other accountable, do you call each other out, kind of... other accountable? Do you call each other out? Kind of, what, what's some advice around, around operationalizing this kind of coherent governance?
Well, we're not perfect, but boy, we really don't, I, we don't stray. We really don't. We, what somebody, you know, can, whether it be the board president or someone would say, you know, if, if they see that it going in that direction, pull back on, you know, what's, how does this pertain to our policies? We go back, I mean, the word policy is just beaten in, in all of our meetings. We just really, really adhere to what, what it is that, that monitoring report that month has, has in it in terms of how does it, how does that relate to, back to our policy? And it reins in those types, it takes some, some training. And there are, there are times, but not very often. I think, I think it just comes with the, again, that sort of, you're centered back on, this is, this is my lane. Yeah, I do this. And every, you know, the superintendent administration does this. So it, it becomes very, it's kind of easy.
I would, I would agree with Kathy. I think it's easier for, I mean, even in the two, two and a half years I've been on the board, it's easier now. Kathy's kind of like our policy police. So, and I mean that in a most complimentary way, Kathy, so you know, but it's really important. I mean, we all have our policy book right in front of us at the meeting, and we've referred to it often. It's like, what do our policies say? And the other thing, when you asked about holding us accountable, at the end of each meeting, we have, I think it's a, we call it a debrief, but it's really our, at the end of every meeting, we talk about how the meeting went, if we think we stayed in line with what we're supposed to, we stayed in our lane. So we reassess how we did at the end of every school board meeting.
Dr. Bika?
Thanks. I, I also want to thank you so much for being with us tonight. In the timing, it couldn't be any more important. I, similar question. I wanted to know how you feel coherent governance has helped you with, with our current, the, the back-to-school planning for Chippewa Falls? Because I can imagine a board that's in the coherent model being very, very different from a board that doesn't have the model and really getting in the weeds. So talking about something that wasn't just kind of your typical month-to-month progress, but in more extraordinary times.
Well, I think that we are, we are in really unique situation right now because we have, we've actually only had one, and that was a special meeting with our new superintendent. So we're, we're, you know, we're really in, in uncharted waters because it's, it's that the, the trust word has just risen to the top, shot right to the top. Because, you know, we, we are, are sitting back and holding our tongues. We may have thoughts and we, we communicate, but we're not getting, we're not doing the superintendent's job. And then tomorrow night, actually, is our, our monthly board meeting in which we will discuss our reopening. So it's, it's something that is, you know, it, it's, again, you just have to trust the process and understand which, what is your role in the whole bigger picture. So it's, it's very different.
And I would echo what Kathy said. These are extraordinary times, but we have, I know originally, and again, I wasn't on the board then, there was a lack of trust. But really with our model and how it has worked, we have, I believe that administration has confidence and trust in the board and vice versa. And although I know many of you have educational backgrounds, on our board, we actually have three lawyers. Who would ever want that? I'm not really sure. But, but, I mean, we're letting the experts, so to speak, try to figure that out. They've been working, even before our new superintendent was chosen, they have been working on coming up with a plan. And he's helped guide them and, and move forward. I'm not really sure if we'll have it completely hammered out before our August meeting, but they certainly have released at least a tenant, you know, what the different platforms might be. So we're really relying on the experts in the field, so to speak, and the trust. And they keep us, it's not like they operate in a vacuum. Like I said, we get executive summaries. If something's coming up, they still, the communication between the board and the superintendent is still open and frequent. It's, it's just, like Kathy said, we stay in our lane and we're deferring to the experts, so to speak. That doesn't mean we don't get emails and phone calls and stopped in the grocery store about this issue. Don't get me wrong. I'm sure that happens to all of you too. But I really have a lot of confidence in our superintendent and our administrative team and our staff to be able to handle it. And I know many of the staff and administrators in Eau Claire School District. And regardless of what you decide to do, I'm sure it's going to be with all the various players giving you expert opinions. And I'm, you know, there's, there's really not a right answer. You can just come up with the best plan for your students and go from there.
Dr. Johnson?
Hi. Thank you for providing the backdrop to coherent governance. I, I guess what I'm struggling with, and it's a recurring theme in the comments that you guys have stated, is this, this trust, the trust between the board and the superintendent. But as I, as I read the first three chapters, another recurring theme, though, is as, as a board, we, we are stewards to the owners and the owners are the community. And I, I guess what I, I'm curious to know is, how do, how do we ensure lines of communication with the owner, with the community member? So, because I, I really question, regardless of the amount of trust that a board has between the superintendent, there also needs to be multiple avenues that community members, without those concerns being filtered through an administrator, being expressed to the stewards or the, our, 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 our board members. And so from your perspective, what are your, what are your modes of communication outside of your dependence on the executive and the, and not counting the, I would call somewhat of a disruptive comment while you're grocery shopping. It, it is quite odd when you're in Target and people want to share ideas with you. That's not really the necessary place. But I'm really, how, how do we ensure, though, that multiple members, especially those members who would find themselves marginalized in terms of really having a voice? How, how have you guys found getting those communication lines available to those members? Thank you.
Sharon, do you want to take that first?
Sure.
That first being the, she's the chair, the chairwoman of the communications committee.
Well, not anymore, but I was. So, because now I'm on the coherent governance committee.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe I, I was, if I misled you a little, I apologize. The, the single point of contact's the superintendent, but that doesn't mean that we don't, when I get input from community members or whoever it is, I'm, I send it to the superintendent. So as opposed to the board going, like, if I know it has to do with curriculum, I don't, that doesn't necessarily go directly to the director of curriculum. It goes from the super, to the superintendent, and the superintendent then disseminates that information. Now, I, I mean, you're, you're, you're talking to a person who literally prosecutes child abuse and neglect cases. And, and I, I have a passion for helping people who are marginalized and at risk. So we are doing everything we can to be more inclusive. There's still a long ways to go, as everybody knows. But we have also, you know, we're, we have talked about, when I was still on the communications committee, going to the schools and letting the students have a meet and greet, so to speak, with the school board in a setting that they might be, be more comfortable in. I mean, I don't think students are as likely to go to a coffee shop to have coffee with the board. So we've tried to do what we can to get out into the community. When I talked about our community conversation, we had several students participate in that. Some of them were from the LGBTQ community. Some of them were persons of color. So we, we try to do everything that we can to, to include everyone. You know, we don't have a magic answer, but we're, we're willing to take our dog and pony show on the road, so to speak, and go talk to anybody we can. So the single point of contact is really just to make sure that board members aren't going directly to like a certain teacher if someone's complained about the teacher. It's more to make sure it's going through the proper lines of communication. That doesn't mean we don't hear those things because we all do. So I hope I explained that a little bit better.
And, and again, we have policies. We have policies that are, that we can, we can, you know, point right to as far as communicating with the public. You know, it's our OER, operational expectation number 10. And so we, we, we always have a policy behind whatever it is that, that we're, whatever the subject area is. And we go back and we refer to what our, how our policy reads. And, well, you're right. We, we were all elected or sometimes appointed, but elected by the public, the taxpayers, the people who are, that were, as you say, being stewards of, of, of their money for the sake of the public education. And so it's not that we, no one, no one hides behind each other. We don't hide behind the superintendent or the superintendent doesn't hide behind the board. We, but we do have policies that will address how we communicate with the public and how the superintendent, you know, who, who does what. And it goes back to, you know, the, the operational expectation policy. And as the, like I say, we have very few committees, the one being the coherent governance, but they also the communication. And that, that's it. Those committees are the ones that are, they structure the different, different things that the board members become more visible to the public in a, in a structured environment. Of course, like, say, we're all part of this community and we're all members of the public, but the, the structured, you know, outings, let's say, where the, where we invite the, the community in or we go out to the community. We, we do things like we, we, we set up a presentation that we did to just a variety, we, we opened it up to, to everyone in the community and different civic organizations invited us into their monthly meeting. And we, we told them, you know, here, this is what the board does, so that everybody can understand what it is that, what our role is. And, you know, it was very, very welcoming, welcoming meetings. We had, we went into the different PTO organizations in the schools and presented to them, this is what the board does. And so it's, it's, the board is there. The board is, it's just that we're not, we're not, you know, like Sharon said, deciding on the paint colors and deciding on, you know, the, those types of things that, that we leave that up to the administrator and the professionals take care of that. But we're there. We're, we're, you know, we have our information, as I, as I'm sure you do too, on the school website that, you know, members of the public can, can reach out to us. And if you're trying to like pass a big referendum or reopen school, they'll, they will reach out to you. But we, again, know what to do. We have a process for how that information is handled. So...
And if I can just add one quick thing, we do have the two standing committees. We do have the ability through our policies to also create ad hoc committees. I served on the Alternative Pathways to Graduation Committee because when we went from seven class periods a day to the block scheduling, it affected the possibility of our Chippewa Valley High School, which is our alternative high school, students to be able to meet the credit requirements. So if there's some kind of issue, like bias and, and, and those kinds of things, we can form ad hoc committees to, to specifically deal with those. They're kind of like solve and dissolve committees, so to speak. I mean, they're in place for as long as necessary. So...
Commissioner Zer, I saw you had yourself unmuted for a moment?
Yes, I did. Thanks.
Before you start, sorry, sorry. I'll just, Commissioner Harder, I also have you next on the, on the list. Sorry, Commissioners, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. Just so, I guess if you could speak, so I have a follow-up to Commissioner Johnson's question, and then if you could speak to one other point for me. So when you have this old system, I guess, non-coherent governing, you know, way of doing things where there's a lot of involvement by the board in various operational decisions and the community, whether that's your teaching community, your, the trustees, the, you know, parents, sort of are used to being able to filter their questions, their concerns through you to, then to the administration. So for example, right now, we're, we're fielding a lot of concern, a lot of, of inquiry about school reopening. And people are really leaning on us to bring their concerns forward. So I think this gets to Commissioner Johnson's question about us being the trustees of the community, these people who, who have entrusted us to manage public education in our district. So as we transition to a new way of doing things, what does that look like? How do we communicate now to the public of, you know, that we are no longer really the best way of going, we're now, I'm going to, I'm going to turn you over to the superintendent. Sorry, I know I used to talk to you about this, but now I'm going to turn you over to the superintendent. And, and I think that's, I think that there's a lot of benefit to that because what I have told a lot of people is, I can't actually really help you with that, but the superintendent can, or the directors can. So get in touch with him, communicate with him. That's going to be a really good avenue, you know, by which you go. So, but how long did that take? What does that look like? And then the other question I had, the other thing that has really stuck out for me is the decisions reserved for the board. Can you speak to how you chose which decisions were going to be really important to you and how they aligned with the policies and aligned with your operational expectations? Maybe give us an example or two of what you chose. I think that'd be really helpful. So, thanks.
Well, the, and the issue of the, the, like you say, the communication or being accessible to your, to your public, you, that's still, that, that doesn't go away. That doesn't, you don't become, you know, nameless, faceless people. The, and you also can't stop the, the, the public, and you shouldn't stop the public from wanting to communicate with you or get in touch with you. But again, it's, it's just that how, you go back to the framework and the, that you, you take that information and how, what you do with it is, it's filtered back to the superintendent. Again, that's, like I say, the superintendent has a tremendous amount of autonomy, but also accountability. I mean, it states, you know, operational expectation 10 is communicating with the public. The superintendent shall, shall assure that the public is adequately informed about the conditions and the direction of the district. The onus is on the superintendent to make sure that that is, that, that, the, the, the public, the constituents are, are informed, informed correctly, timely, you know, with the utmost integrity. So it's, it's, in that, that information, that, that the story, the comment, the compliment, the complaint may have originated between board member and public person number three, but it ultimately, the, the policy, we bring it all back to the center and the superintendent, the onus is on the superintendent to make sure that the public stays informed. And that may look different for different superintendents, but it's what the board is directing them to do. And as far as what, your second part of your question of, of what, what we want, what the board wants, again, these are the framework of, it would help if, like, the... board wants, again, these are the framework of, it would help if, like the monitoring reports that we, you know, live and die by, those are the things that, within those monitoring reports, we, our district, with the superintendent and the administrators and the professionals have developed which, what artifacts, what it is that they're going to use to show us, to sort of say, prove this is how that, that policy, that particular policy and the artifacts, the data points that we're going to, they're going to show, show that they've actually made reasonable progress toward, again, the ultimate goal of student achievement. So they, you know, the, our, the monitoring reports that we have now have, you know, it's been, it's been a work in progress. They change, they morph, they, you know, depending on the different assessment data and things like that, the state changes there, you know how that goes, the state changes after two years, oh, we're now going to look at this instead of that. Oh, forget the forward exam. Oh, let's do that, you know what I mean? So you have to, of course, be adaptable to those kinds of things. But again, the professionals, they will, will change the monitoring policy to present to us according to what is in line that actually shows that the progress is being made.
And I would just say as well, I mean, when I get comments regarding whatever issue it is, I, you know, speak to whoever it is, or we get plenty of emails, I forward that information. So I just, I always make sure that I try to let the constituents know that I've heard what they have to say and I'm passing it along to the appropriate person who in our case is the superintendent. So we still take all in, take in all that information and sometimes have discussions with the superintendent with, at the board, meaning about those kinds of things. And I wasn't on the board when coherent governance first started, but I do think, I mean, I've talked to enough different boards that have it, that, I mean, it kind of morphs as you go along. It can start with whatever your priorities and policies are that you want to focus on and you can add more as you go along. So just because you start with, you know, monitoring 12 different things doesn't mean that that can't be either reduced or enlarged later. So every board with coherent governance can, can model that after what they think is the most important.
We are running a bit short on time, but I want to make sure each of the Commissioners gets an opportunity to ask a question. So we will go to Commissioner Harder and then Commissioner Clements. If we can do it briefly, that would be, that would be great.
I will try to keep it brief. I just would say, I do, I, as we've read these three chapters, I more and more like the sound of coherent governance myself. The book we were reading said if you were able to start fresh, posed the question, if you were able to start fresh with your board process and remove the history of how, of the rituals of how it functions, what would your board process look like? After my four brief years of experience, this approach resonates very strongly with me as a potentially powerful technique for keeping board attention focused where it is most needed and most valuable. So, but with that, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. It really makes sense to me that we're not cut off from the public through coherent governance. I know those emails that we got this weekend would come in regardless of what our governance strategy is, and I'm grateful for that. I learned a lot from those emails, so I hope and trust that will not change. There is a question of inform, informing through policy, making sure that the public is informed. Do you have anything about, that's more than informing them about decisions made, but consulting or surveying about opinions? That's one question. And the other question is related to the question of getting cut off from the public. It's about the school staff and the wider staff and the contact we have with, with those folks on occasion that I also have found valuable in the past.
And can I ask, how, how do you, what is your contact or your level of contact or your, the avenues of contact that you have with the staff that you're, I mean, is it like?
Yeah, also through email is a lot of it, but, you know, there are other opportunities as well, face-to-face things, in meetings. It's lax now that we're all virtual and sort of in our bubbles. There's less chances for sort of incidental contact and discussion, but.
Well, and I, oh, email, sure. And again, I doesn't, it isn't that the board members are, you know, the behind, don't look behind the curtain, you know? I mean, it's not the Oz type of thing, and I don't, I don't mean to portray it like that, but it's, but it's much more of a, to give it more of like, just a clean point of contact, a clean process that, again, that goes back to the trust, the trust that the superintendent and the board president have, that they're the single point of contact and that information doesn't get lost or swept under a rug or not welcome. It's welcome, it's there. But again, it goes back to staying with the policies and that it's, it resides with the superintendent to make sure it's in the policies. This is part of the, the whole construct of the, of their job, their, how their, how, how the superintendent is, the board superintendent relationships and how the, you know, the formative assessment for the superintendent is, is structured, is that the policies are adhered to. And you make those policies look like you want, you, you, the board, that's up to you. But there's, there's framework in it, but it's, it's not, you're not cutting off, would you rather, it's just a cleaner, and it works. It may seem like, it sounds like it doesn't work, but it does because it also eliminates, you know, seven board members saying seven different things.
Is it oversimplifying to say we don't limit what kinds of communications come in, but we limit how we deal with?
How it goes back all the other way. That could be, yes, that would be a way of looking at, yep. And it doesn't, and that can be, you know, personalized, and like you say, consulting. I mean, it's, you know, the superintendent can't do that in a bubble. They have to understand this is, you know, this was conveyed to me and, you know, this is what the information's going to go out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clements?
So my, getting to understand, seeking to understand this model, following up from that workshop that several of us were able to attend a few weeks ago and getting to the first few chapters of this book, you know, I'm trying to differentiate between the terminology that's used and then how, how that actually works in practice. So the terms that are used are, are policy versus operational, but, you know, policies deal with operations by their nature. And we don't know what those, how to target those policies unless we understand how they're implemented. And additionally through our, Despite the Best Intentions book that three of us are going through, the authors made it very clear that one of the problems is that there's a big lacuna between the policies as they're intended and the policies as how they're implemented. And so, you know, I'm struggling to figure out how do we respect that, that space between the board and staff, but also having to be kind of intimately aware of how things actually function so that we ensure that, that our intent is there. Rather than looking at, you know, if you get a report, and I don't want to oversimplify, simplify, but if you get a report with, with indicators on it and they're either green, yellow, or red, and you say, okay, these things are red, let's, let's talk about those, will we don't talk about, we don't, we don't really know what the means were, the process? You know, how did you come up with, with those things? And then I'm more familiar with terminology such as like what strategic versus operational, meaning board operates at a strategic level, and then staff works primarily on the tactical level, the implementation. So especially with regard to everything that's going on with equity in our, I think I can speak for the board and our high concern with that. It can be difficult to say, yeah, we're good on policy, but the outcomes still aren't good. How do we, you know, how do we figure out where's that appropriate balance and what's our role in, in that context?
Well, I think that, that the, the definition of policy, I think you're right, you're right. It's, I mean, it gives, it's, that's more of a esoteric kind of, oh, this is our policy. But what, what, take, I think I would offer this. Take a look at our agenda, our board agenda, like for tomorrow night, look at the monitoring reports that we're going to be doing, or go back and look at some of the past board. And you'll see that in those monitoring reports, that's, that's, that's exactly what we're doing, is we're monitoring it through each of, we're monitoring our policies through each of those reports given to us monthly, one or two of them. And it's, it's though, it's the administrator, the department that is responsible for that have, they're the ones that have, have developed these, the potential artifacts, the proof of showing us how this policy has been implemented and we're headed in the right direction. And it's, it flows. And I think, I think that the word policy kind of, you get hung up on it, but, and we do say it all the time, but it's, it's like, it's the meat and potatoes. It's a what? What we want out of the district? What we want our children to, to get out of their education? And it's the how that is done is, that's the administration, that's the superintendent's job to make sure that the administration under them gets it done. And they show us those in the reports. So that, so as I say, take a look at, I don't know if you've had a chance, take a look at our, one of our agenda, meeting agendas, and you'll see what those monitoring reports look like and how that policy is, what reality, you know, what, what is the day-to-day operations?
And, and I would just add that if we don't believe what's in that report is the way we want it monitored, we ask for them to add or change. So the board would still have the ability to, to mold what that monitoring report or the OE reports look like and what's being monitored. So you'd still have the ability to have input regarding whatever issue that is most important to you, or, or, I mean, there was one report that we didn't, we didn't necessarily like the data that, that was collected, so we asked for different data. So you would still have that ability to, to mold what you're getting in monitoring reports.
So as a kind of clarifying question, you're describing very quantitative means of evaluating progress where I think, you know, many of the things that I think residents seem to care about, and I think, speaking for, as a board member, that you care about the process also, as well as some of those qualitative aspects of how exactly is the district functioning? You know, how do you evaluate those things where you, where it's, it's difficult to put a number on process? You know, was the process inclusive? Well, you know, how do we measure that? Or do we have a positive work culture among staff? You know, how do we, how do we report those things that, that we care about, although it may be difficult to quantify?
Well, some of the artifacts that are given to us, like for that example, the assessing employee engagement or, you know, staff, they're, the HR director has, in, you know, what they've chosen is to send out, you know, do surveys or do, do ask questionnaires and then they compile that data and put it in the, in the monitoring report to be the artifact that shows, look, this is what we're asking and this is, these are the outcomes and this is what we're doing about it. If they're going downhill or going uphill, you know, I mean, whatever. That's why it's longitudinal, you know? We look at it over time and we look at, and each, each area that's being monitored, they all, they all have very, very different artifacts that we're given to look at.
We're definitely out of time for our planned session tonight. I want to say on behalf of the board, Kathy and Sharon, thank you so much for taking time out of your nights to come and share this learning and information with us. It's been very valuable and we're really glad that you were able to make time for us. So thank you again for being here tonight and we look forward to asking you more questions in the future.
That's just fine. Thank you very much for having us and good luck to you.
Thank you. At this point, we will return to our public forum. We normally provide a 30-minute window. I would like for everybody to be able to be heard completely, but I, so I will ask for our speakers if you can tighten it up or be brief so that we can get through everybody. I will, of course, extend it. We want to hear what everyone has to say, but in the interest of time and being able to get to the presentation and discussion afterwards, I will remind, if someone hits on a topic that you had planned to speak on, maybe going a little bit quicker would be helpful. You will have four minutes at maximum to address the board. And the school board, as ever, will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or any person connected with the school system in our public forum. We do have, as I said, 13 people signed up tonight. The first of those is Dan Wilson. When you begin to speak, please state your name and your address, just for the public record.
Okay, am I on? Everybody hearing me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dan Wilson, 3753 Patton Street, Eau Claire. I'm a special education teacher at Memorial High School. However, I'm speaking to, speaking to you tonight as an executive team member for the Eau Claire Association of Educators. In the responses to a recent survey sent to our members, some questions have repeatedly been raised about the plan. I would like you to be aware of two most common themes that occurred in the responses regarding the delivery of instruction. As you listen to the presentation tonight, please listen for answers to these questions or raise them if they're not addressed. As teachers, we all strive to provide engaging instruction for our students. If teachers are asked to provide instruction for both online and in-class students simultaneously, as much as we would try, we cannot ensure that the students will be receiving the best possible instructional lesson. If there is one thing teachers have learned this past spring, is that online teaching and in-class teaching are completely different. How is the instruction going to be planned and delivered for each group of students? Seamless instruction is always a goal, yet we assume that we can expect an even greater shortage of available substitute teachers this fall. How will this impact the students and what will be the expectations for other teachers to cover an absence, both in school and for the virtual component? The second point, many of our teachers are traveling teachers. Some are expected to travel daily between buildings. Others teach in multiple classrooms within a building. How is this going to be addressed with the students' grouping schedule and also still consider the additional safety concerns this brings about? Lastly, to all of, to all who have had a part in developing the plan being brought forth tonight, thank you for all of the time and effort that has gone into it. We hope that many of our concerns will be answered in the presentation. We look forward to providing the best possible instruction to the students of Eau Claire and in the safest way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Wilchin.
Hear me?
We can, thank you.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brian Wilchin. I live at 4505 Kensington Court. Today, I'm celebrating with my wife 18 years of marriage. We chose Eau Claire as our home and to raise a family. Currently, we have a son who is a sophomore, a daughter in seventh grade, and our youngest son in third grade, all in the Eau Claire School District. Not only am I a parent in the district, but I'm also an educator. I've taught for over 20 years in Eau Claire. I've been proud to work in a district where teachers' voices do matter. I'm proud to work in a district that values public education for my children as well. That is why I'm speaking to you today as both a parent and an employee. The month of March is probably one of the most difficult times as an educator for me. When the decision was made to go to online learning, I did not know that it would be for the rest of the school year. Teachers and staff across the district worked well past contract hours to get virtual learning up and running basically overnight. Was it perfect? No, but teachers worked early in the morning, throughout the day, and even late into the night to help our students. We did this because we care. ECSD went virtual to stave students from being infected, and guess what? It worked. Infections among children were basically nonexistent here in Eau Claire. As an educator, I've had to protect my students' lives with fire drills, tornado drills, and yes, active shooter drills. The one drill we had not prepared for was to protect from a deadly airborne virus, but we did that too. We shut school buildings down to keep the virus away. We shut school buildings down to keep the virus away. But now we are faced with the decision of reopening schools for those same students that we swear to protect with our own lives. Numbers are increasing nationwide, statewide, and here in Eau Claire. The numbers are significantly higher than they were in March, where we had no problem keeping students home and safe. According to the Respond Together Eau Claire, we are currently on step D. If I look at that chart correctly for indoor spaces, it states that the maximum number of attendees in a building is limited to 100. How do you plan to follow that at South Middle School with a student body close to 900? Even half of that is over four times more than recommended. Also, according to the Eau Claire County Health Department COVID-19 Prevention and Control Order that went into effect July 8th, under subsection three, public gatherings, it states any public gathering of more than 50 people is strongly discouraged. Public gatherings of more than 100 people in an indoor space are prohibited in order to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Well, you might say that students are in their own classrooms and not in a huge gathering. But have any of you visited South Middle School in the sixth grade wing? There are 11 classrooms in this small, square-shaped area that all share the same ventilation system and removable walls. Even if we were to limit these 11 classrooms to 15 students each, that is 165 students and 11 staff members that are sharing the same air in a small space. This does not meet the Together Eau Claire or Eau Claire County Health Department guidelines. A final source I'm going to refer to is the Badger Bounce Back Dashboard and the progress indicators from the Department of Health Services. Eau Claire County is in the red in four out of the six categories. Based on these indicators, schools should not be opening when 67% of the indicators are in the red. As an educator, I cannot imagine how I'd feel if a student or a colleague was to contract COVID at school and become sick or even die. Fires happen, tornadoes happen, and even school shootings unfortunately happen. We don't see those coming, but COVID-19 is here and growing in our community. We have a duty to protect our students and employees from this illness and don't have a solid safety plan that we can implement at this point. This virtual school board meeting itself shows you that it is not safe to meet in person for an extended period of time. If a small group of adults cannot be in the same room together for more than an hour due to COVID, why are we expecting our students to be together for an entire school day? If you want us to sustain this plan of opening up schools, would you commit to come into a classroom for a day? If you are not willing to sit in a classroom with 15 other students for eight hours, then why should staff and students be put in that position? We do not have proper safety measures in place now, so it is currently not safe to return. The traditional in-school instruction does not fit with these extraordinary circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Wilchin. I'm sorry to interrupt, but you are out of time and we do have a lot of speakers tonight. I appreciate your comment. Next on the list is Amy Carlson-Sather.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Carlson-Sather and I live at 2737 K Street in Eau Claire. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. Thank you. I also want to thank all the people who spent countless hours creating the plan that is being shared tonight. I appreciate their dedication to our students, staff, and district. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Eau Claire Association of Educators. I'm part of the executive team. I also am a seventh-grade teacher at North Star Middle School. So during the past several days, our members had the opportunity to share their concerns about safety in relation to the proposed 2021 instructional model in two separate surveys that were sent out. The majority of our members who responded to the ECAE survey felt uncomfortable with the proposed instructional model plan due to concerns that they have about safety. We hope that many of these concerns and questions are addressed in the presentation tonight. One of the main safety concerns involves masks. In the ECAE survey, where 255 members responded, 87% were in favor of requiring students to wear masks, with exceptions due to special circumstances. Members are concerned about the safety and health of their students and fellow staff if masks aren't required. In addition to requiring masks, many businesses have been installing plastic barriers to further prevent transmission of coronavirus. Will these barriers be installed in classrooms and around staff desks to aid in small group instructions? Are high-quality masks and face shields going to be provided to lower transmission risks? In addition to the safety concerns about masks and barriers, there were many concerns in the survey about cleaning, sanitizing, and ventilation. Proper ventilation in some buildings and hallways has been a concern. If schools don't have a lot of fresh air coming in and that air isn't adequately filtered, how can we be sure that our students and staff are safe? South Memorial and spaces within other schools were specifically mentioned. Students in middle and high school have usually changed classes seven times during the day. How are desks, doorknobs, bathrooms, and other shared surfaces going to be sanitized? How often will that be done? The final safety concern that I will be sharing is about the first and second grade specifically. In the proposed instructional plan, it appears that they will be attending four days a week with full classes. How will social distancing be maintained in this scenario? In order for social distancing, distancing to be maintained, how will the additional staffing and space needs be addressed? How we approach returning in the fall will affect the lives of all of us at ECASD. There is still so much that is unknown about the long-term effects of coronavirus. Please take into account the current scientific recommendations and evolving local conditions. Our highest priority needs to be the safety and health of our students and staff. Thank you for your time and dedication to the students and staff within ECASD.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah French.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
We can, Sarah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Sarah French. I'm at 3103 Ellis Street here in Eau Claire. I'm the executive director for our Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. Thank you for having me today. We have seen an incredible response from the community for the Solar On Eau Claire Schools Project, and we are excited to see it come to life for our students. The fundraising effort to ensure this opportunity for our schools has been widely grassroots and has seen incredible momentum. We've graciously received match support from the Pablo Foundation and some community businesses have made, have made gifts and showed their support as well. And the majority of donors for the project have been individuals and families and small groups, showcasing the community's collective support for the project, making it even more personal. Those individual family donors to the project include parents, students, teachers, alumni, public schools foundation board members, city council members, neighbors, even several of you commissioners, and more. And so today, we just wanted to express our, express our thanks to the school board for your support of the Solar On Eau Claire Schools Project. We're so pleased to see the awarding of the installation contract included in tonight's agenda and thrilled to see this coming to life for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next comment is from W.J. Vincent.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
My name's W.J. Vincent. I'm at 2106 Bordeaux Court here in Eau Claire. Grew up in the area. I'm a single father, four kids, two are up and out now, one's still in college. And I've got a seventh grader and I also have one that's going into fifth grade. So my concerns, I just thought it was important to at least bring up, is that we've been faced with an unprecedented media blitz over the last few months about how deadly and dangerous the coronavirus is. And there's not been a lot of accountability for the media with that. And if you actually dig into the research and you look into the science, there's a lot that's showing that this is very similar to the flu, which we've kind of accepted as a risk of our regular school system for many years already. Now, there's no doubt that there's a, what's, how would you explain it? Far greater risk in the elderly population. But just to quote some actual scientific facts that are out there to kind of help with the decision-making tonight. The COVID-19 pandemic has shown a markedly low proportion of cases among children. Age disparities in observed cases could be explained by children having lower susceptibility to infection, lower propensity to show clinical symptoms, or both. You can find that on nature.com. From Belgium to Japan, schools are abandoning certain social distancing measures, such as alternate day schedules or extra space between desks. They have decided that part-time or voluntary school attendance, supplemented by distance learning, is not enough. That full classrooms are preferable to leaving kids at home. Now, you can find that on the Washington Post. The importance of in-person learning is well documented and there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring of 2020. The 67,000 pediatricians wrote that lengthy time away from school and associated interruption of supportive services often results in social isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits, as well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, depression, and suicidal ideation. This in turn places children and adolescents at considerable risk of morbidity and in some cases mortality. That's the American Academy of Pediatrics. One of the last statistical things to share, a lot of people have heard that Sweden decided to not close down. We actually have a lot of information that we can look to, to that. Their decision to keep schools open during the pandemic resulted in no higher rate of infection among its schoolchildren than a neighbor in Finland that did close. You can find a lot of data on this. I specifically used Reuters from Stockholm. I guess the point that I'd like to make sure is being considered tonight is that there's no doubt, this has been scary for many of us. There's no doubt, we're all grateful to the frontline work the teachers have to do, that the board is doing, that the school district is doing in order to try to find some way to make this work. I think it needs to be noted, though, that children 19 and under are at considerably less risk, if any at all, and some of the younger ones, even some of the elementary schools. I believe one of the teachers brought that up as a risk. I think that's because it's almost zero transmission. They're even saying they can hug their grandparents safely on a lot of the scientific data that's out there. This is emotional, I understand that. As a parent, I'm in a risk category myself. Cold morbidities are obviously the thing most people have to be worried about. I would suggest the possibility of at-risk teachers and staff perhaps zooming instead of having the students only go a few days. Maybe consider liability waivers, that sort of thing, in order to mitigate some of the potential risk if someone were to be in the unfortunate category of getting sick and having something happen. Appreciate everything that you're doing. We love all the teachers and everything that we do. We thank you and good luck in your decision-making process.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margot Griffin.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Margot Griffin and my husband Matthew and I live at 2304 Orchard Place. We are parents to two students, one at Roosevelt and one at DeLonge. And I represent my friends and family members in the district. I would like to speak about two different subjects. One, the online education, and the second is the use of masks. I believe first for masks, we have shown that the limited amount of COVID here in the area means that there have been no deaths, I believe, with children in the area. We don't know how safe it is for children to be wearing these masks all day. Are they being deprived of oxygen? Is it hard to understand what they're saying, what the teachers are saying? Is it more stressful for the teachers and the students to have to deal with the masks? I mean, have we considered how hard it's going to be for students to keep the masks clean? How hard it will be for the students to focus on what they're trying to learn? And how will it work with music, eating lunch, having recess, having gym? Those are all things where you should not wear a mask. And as far as online education, I think we've all seen how hard that was this spring. Parents are not school educators and we don't pretend to be. And most of the teachers that I have worked with have children of their own. And it's very difficult for the teachers to be managing their own children, plus trying to deal with online education of students. I want to make sure that we're considering that this might disproportionately affect our low-income and minority students and families in the district. Many of them do not have married parents. They might have single income, or they might have both parents that have to work. And this is going to be nearly impossible for them to sustain. And we have to consider the mental health and the morale that this is putting on the students, the impact of that, the pressure on the local economy when no students have parents that can go to work because they have to watch their kids. And the students might have parents that will go to work anyway and leave them at home to do whatever they might want to do on the internet. And I think we know what kind of mischief will come with that. There could be more online bullying if children are allowed unlimited access to the internet. And it can be very difficult for parents to be working from home, even if their job allows them to work from home. How are they going to manage doing that and still caring for their children? Are we considering how this impacts people that have different learning styles? My daughter, for example, it takes her quite a while to get through online lessons. Sometimes during the spring, she was working at school in the office here at home for 12 hours a day because it's harder for her when she doesn't transition from one class to the next as quickly to make herself move on. Whereas when she's in school, she's able to say, okay, this class is done, now I'm on to the next one. I think overall, there are too many things to consider to make this a totally COVID-free zone. So we're going to just have to go back to school full-time with no masks and see what happens. I think we're all going to be fine. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Poser.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Poser?
Yes, all right.
We can, we can hear you.
Perfect. My name is Carrie Poser and I live at 3035 Eddie Lane. I'm a parent of a second-grade teacher, excuse me, a second-grade student. And like many parents, I juggled working a full-time job while attempting to teach my first grader at home this spring. While I would love for my son to return to school, see his friends, and leave the house again, just because I want things to go back to normal doesn't mean it can, or even that it should. I am disappointed in the Eau Claire School District's proposed plan, at least that which I've seen. I believe it's too soon to possibly know what kind of risk or increase in community spread will exist in six weeks to allow students to safely return into the classroom. I have four basic concerns. Number one is the world that we currently live in. Every school district in Wisconsin is wrestling with this decision. But if you look at the Wisconsin DHS website, you can see that in the last month, Milwaukee's had a 45% increase in positive cases. Dane has had a 105% increase. Both of these counties have current mask ordinances now in effect and both will be providing 100% virtual instruction to all students come fall. But in Eau Claire, we've had an 84% increase in the last month with 31 cases just over the weekend, and we only have a mask recommendation. Yet the school district's proposed plan would have my second grader sitting in a classroom in person four days a week without a mask. Today in the news, they reported, for teachers' unions for the five largest school districts in Wisconsin, wrote a letter to DHS, DPI, and the governor asking to keep schools closed for the start of the school year to allow only for online instruction. I'm of the belief that the Eau Claire School District should follow line with those other districts to ensure the safety of students and their families. My second concern comes from the notification process. So what is the plan for the school district to inform parents if there's a risk or a positive case? How will the school districts even find out? Is the public health department going to notify the school or post something online like they do when somebody's been exposed at a restaurant or a bar? How exactly will that, I be told that my son may have been exposed to COVID? Next is the issue of safety precautions. I can't go to Menards or Walmart even for 15 minutes without wearing a mask. But my seven-year-old is supposed to sit in a classroom with 20 other kids for eight hours a day, four days a week, starting in six weeks, without a mask. Following CDC guidance and that of our own Eau Claire Public Health Director, everyone should be socially distancing, washing hands, and wearing a mask. And anyone that's been around second graders knows that those things aren't possible in a second-grade classroom. And finally, is the lack of flexibility that the, that the proposed plan demonstrates. And there's a ton of unanswered questions. One, if a family chooses the 100% virtual option that currently is available in the proposed plan, what does that look like? Will the student be enrolled at their school and just participate virtually? Or will they be enrolled in a separate educational academy or alternative outside of their own community school district? Why, with all the funding for technology and free options available, are we not using them? Why can't instructional classroom time be livestreamed or even recorded? A student might not be able to attend school because they are high-risk or they have a family member that's high-risk. But also, and like my family, I'm just not comfortable taking the risk of sending my child to school, being in a room with 20 other kids, not wearing masks with unknown COVID exposure. With the use of technology includes... With the use of technology, including live or recorded streaming, these students can maintain their continued connection to their school, their teachers, watch the instructional time, complete their work, and submit it for review. And I realize this won't work for all families, but that's where the point about being flexible comes into play. With the proposed plan, the school district is disenfranchising students whose families don't feel comfortable sending them to school in six weeks. And as a parent, I'm now forced to choose between my child's education and my family's health. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Kampf.
Hi, uh, my name is William Kampf. I'm at one zero three two Violet Avenue. Um, I have a kindergartner and a second grader. Um, first off, I just want to echo almost everything that was just stated by the previous caller or presenter. I uh am in total agreement with every point that was made. I've also contacted everyone on the school board with very much some of the same concerns um that I'll be discussing again right now. Um, first off, there should not be school in person in the fall. That's my position, that's my belief. There's too much about the science that we don't know. The rates of children getting infected and the long term impact on them contracting this virus cannot possibly be known six months to nine months into the data that we have achieved across the world. So I think it is irresponsible for anyone to say that the rates that children are getting affected and their current impacts, whether or not two weeks later or one week later they don't show symptoms, is incredibly dangerous. Plus, the children can easily pass those asymptomatic or the asymptomatic virus on to teachers, community members, family members. And believe me when I say, the death of a parent will be a lot more impactful to a child's life than having to learn online. Another point I would like to make is that we're in a privileged position, and we understand that. Both my wife and I can work from home, we have worked from home while taking care of our children, and it is incredibly difficult position to put other families into having to deal with this while not being able to work from home. So I understand that there has to be some sort of balance that needs to take place. I honestly don't have the answer for that, and I don't know how that would work, but the current plan of having most children be in class two days a week, and first and second graders four days a week, is simply irresponsible. We would be in a different position as a society and as a community if our leadership at the state and federal level had put us in a position to have the proper amount of testing, the proper amount of contract taste, contact tracing, so we could open safely. We are so far from that, that it is not realistic to think that we can put our children back into public buildings and expect that we're not going to have an explosion of cases, that we don't know what the long term health impacts are going to be. So with those comments, I strongly encourage you to not look at this as a, oh, we only have ten cases a day in Eau Claire, or we've only had two deaths. We don't know what the long term impact of this will be, and we do not want to start a wildfire that we can't put out. That's why we're supposed to be wearing masks, that's why we're supposed to be socially distancing. It's because if we don't eventually lower the rates, this will go on and on and on and on. And putting kids back in school, we are taking a huge risk in our community for doing that. Let's start online first and see what happens three, four, or five months down the road with cases. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Sandra Sorenson.
Hi, my name's Sandra Sorenson and I live at S seven seven one one Crestview Drive, and I want to thank the board, the community members, all the task force, and educators. Having been a former educator myself and a parent of four kids that have went through this district, not having grown up in this area but coming here twenty five years ago, I can say that it is one of the finest areas to raise a family and to have great role models. Um, I will ask that the board consider how big the cost will be for our kids by not allowing them to go back to school. I hear lots of concerns, there is science and data behind not transmitting the, the virus to adults. A study recently in Germany tested fifteen hundred children who were in school in May and June without distancing and masks, and the transmission rate has continued to drop. In the twenty thousand cases that have been in the state of California, the death rate of seventy hundred, the death rate has been zero. If you go to CDC and you study the site, it will show you that in the last twelve weeks, the death rate has continued to drop, even from week twenty seventh and July eleventh, giving in part a big piece of this time period where it wasn't even considered an epidemic by the CDC standards. Also, if you look at the CDC and the FAQs on April fifth, not only were the positive cases um counted um on lab results, they also put in where probable cases were now considered a positive case. I do ask and encourage the board to consider numbers that we're seeing. We can all agree that there is question of validity of numbers out there. Reality is, there is always risk. Having been a former teacher, years of home mind back in the nineties, I couldn't guarantee a safety for every single child there was in my classroom. But I could encourage them with hope, and I could empower them to um achieve and to become all that they could be. So I would ask that the board would consider empowering families to have a choice to either choose in person learning or distance learning online if they choose a semester. This would simplify the plan for the educators, it would continue consistency in learning. I do want to commend every single one of them. I listened intently to the first five people. Our plan is, it will impact our entire community. I want to support them, and regardless of whatever the outcome is, I want to encourage our community to focus on becoming stronger because we can and united. Also, in listening to the governance, uh, I think it's, it's uh timely, but we do need to be uncomfortable regardless, but we have to do this for them. We have to do it for all of the risks and the things that will happen if we don't let them get back into school, if that's what their family would want to add for them or for them to go home. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Han.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so firstly, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the thoughtfulness, research, and openness to the school district in deciding what this next school year will look like. I know you guys have all worked tirelessly. Um, we are a family of four and uh with a first and a third grader. I'm a parent and a therapist in the community, and I have concerns about the safety of the teachers, students, and staff in our schools. Um, I have just a general list of questions that I'd like to see addressed. Um, I would like to know, in particular, um, with the community survey that was sent out, um, the data when it was broken down, um, the people that responded that had two, um, at least two working people in the households, um, what families responded that have vulnerable people in their households, and those that have access to limited resources. Um, I want to make sure that their voices are heard and they were factored into the decisions that were made for the online and the hybrid options. I also want to know, what will teachers and staff be offered if they do not feel safe um coming into the schools? Um, we also know, there was a gentleman that spoke in the beginning about um not following guidelines for reopening, and that's, you know, from the top down, like phases for reopening our country. But in the hybrid model, when I'm trying to make a decision um that would be best for our family, I want to know what would a quarantine procedure look like um if a staff, teacher, or student tested positive with COVID nineteen? Um, and how disruptive it would be to all of the school or um the people immediately um exposed to that person? Um, I also want to know what online teaching curriculum training and preparedness teachers will have prior to the start of the school year? Um, and if these teachers are going to be having to do in class teaching as well as distance learning? Uh, those are my questions, and thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have three remaining speakers. The first of those is Beth Smith.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, members of the board and my fellow community members. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. Um, my name is Beth Smith. I live at thirteen oh four Cummings Avenue. I am a district teacher and parent of a Memorial High School student. As we look at safety protocols for in school instruction in the hybrid, hybrid model, I urge the board to require that fast face masks be worn at all times for all who enter the building, with the logical exception of lunch, music classes, et cetera. It is now well established that when all wear masks indoors, in addition to physical distancing, the possibility of spreading the virus drops dramatically. The number one responsibility of schools is the physical safety of our kids and staff. If we are not doing everything in our power to ensure this, we fail the most foundational essence of the school experience itself. Some say that requiring masks is not enforceable. I disagree. If every individual can wear a mask at Menards and in our local clinics and hospitals, and soon at UW Eau Claire and many other retail establishments, then so can we. It is our job to educate about the importance and necessity of wearing masks. With the right amount of education, encouragement, and enforcement, we will get to compliance. In our schools, we enforce all sorts of expectations and rules to protect our physical safety, such as no drugs nor weapons. Surely, with the deadly and devastating pandemic upon us, we can and must do the same in requiring masks. It is a minor inconvenience to bear for the benefit of all. We owe nothing less to our kids and staff.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andy Lund.
Eighty nine eighty one Stonebrook Drive. I was born and raised here, graduated from Memorial High School, have a daughter entering third grade at Meadowview, and a son entering sixth grade at South this fall. The concerns I raised to the board tonight are about returning to school this fall. You know, we can debate the data from different sources for a week and still not have any conclusions, other than we still don't know what's going to happen. Let's instead discuss the educational needs of our students and how different scenarios will affect single parent families or two working parents working the same hours as school. If an instructional plan that includes at home learning is implemented, how are these families going to function? I own and operate a business, and my wife works full time. I know that this past spring was a nightmare for us. Without enough time to prepare, all districts were thrown into the abyss. I personally don't believe ECASD succeeded in educating students beyond March twelfth. At least mine were left to flounder. I believe their teachers were wanting to instruct and trying to, but the district appeared to stop each and every effort. One week it was this, the next week it was that. The end result is, here's some stuff to read and here's some more math sheets to do, the same thing we did the last week we had school. Our kids need to be taught, they need to be with their peers, they need to have the resources the district is required to provide by our state constitution. There's no easy answers. I don't want to be sitting in your shoes tonight, discussing this, thinking about it. If we go back a number of people ago that uh brought up um other countries returning to schools, certain statistics that are talking about kids don't have nearly the they're, they're not, it, I don't, how do you say it? They're, they're not as susceptible to the disease. We don't know. They may not, uh, there's some studies that are saying that kids don't pass it along to adults. Who knows? That's wishful thinking maybe, but I sure hope that's the case. What we do know is that the elderly, those with comorbidities, those with underlying health issues, those are the folks, whether they be teachers, whether they be students, whether they be family members at home with students going to school, I agree, those, those people should probably not return to school. However, I believe that's a very small percentage of, of who needs to go back to school. And to send everybody home to flounder in online education that none of us in the district know how to do, I, I think that's a risk too, too much to take. Uh, thank you for your time and uh good luck in your discussion tonight.
Thank you. Our final speaker for public comment is Mark Goings.
I live at, um, thank you, uh, my name is Mark Goings. I live at E one seven four five zero Conner Road V in Augusta, Wisconsin. And tonight I'm speaking as the president of the Eau Claire Association of Educators. First of all, thank you to all the task force members who have worked countless hours preparing for tonight's meeting and for the fall. We are truly in uncharted times. Tonight's discussion on the back to school proposal will likely be the most important decision that this school board has ever had to make. The sacred trust that community has in the board and in the staff is something that we all deeply feel. With that said, here are a few things I hope the board considers. Um, in the streamlined graphic shared with staff and families last week lie many complex systems and protocols, which we hope will be clarified in tonight's presentation. We hope that as board members, you ask lots of questions and provide thoughtful feedback as the health and welfare of many people are impacted by your decision. For that reason, we also hope that you give yourself some time to think. If you need more information or expanded options, table the vote until net, your next meeting, or schedule an emergency meeting in between, but give yourself some time to review, reflect, and gather. Um, um, tonight you'll also hear about many health concerns related to COVID. Please consider not only our current situation, but where current trends may take us before the start of the school year. Um, according to their most current metrics, the Eau Claire County COVID Preparedness Report currently has six of the ten indicators in the red, which means they are concerning, and two more are yellow. Over the last three weeks or, uh, over the last three or so weeks, um, identified cases and deaths have been an upward, upward trajectory at the state, national, and local levels. Is now really the time to have eleven thousand students and twelve hundred staff meeting irregularly in face to face situations? We are in uncharted waters, and we need to get this right. Another example of giving yourself time is if we were to go, if we were to commit to virtual learning for the start of the year, for example, committing to a minimum of the first nine weeks, the board could then use that time to monitor the trends in COVID cases and also have time to learn from the successes or failures of districts that do go back to some level of in person learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank all of our speakers and all of you that have tuned in to, to listen and share your inform, your inputs. Again, that is an important part of our process here, so thank you for being a part of it. Uh, we'll now turn it over to Mr. Johnson and the executive team to present their proposal for the reopening of schools. for the reopening of schools.
Thank you, Chair Nordin. I'll wait for the PowerPoint to appear. And I really appreciate the comments by all 13 people. Thank you very much for your comments, concerns, and questions that we do need to address, whether it's tonight or whether it's in the future. This evening, I wish to introduce our presentation of the Reopening of Schools Task Force. We're going to be happy tonight to take questions at the end of our presentation. In my superintendent report, I had mentioned the makeup of the group, over 110 members strong, and this work had started in mid-May. Tonight, I would like to introduce our main presenters, Kim Kohler, Abby Johnson, Kay Marks, Jim Schmidt, and Mandy Van Vliet. We are also so fortunate to have the following representatives from the O'Clare City and County Health Department, Director Lyska Gizi, and Assistant Director Marissa Stanley. I'm especially grateful for our partnership with them. We've been able to meet with them fairly often and align our plans to theirs. As a result, our decisions will be driven by the expertise and guidance of our local public health professionals. So first, with the first slide, I would like to start off by discussing the dual priorities throughout this process. First of all, balancing the health and safety of our students and staff with our work as a learning organization. For years, we've never had to plan like this. Learning was always first, second, and third when we started our school year. However, now we must be intensely focused on learning, teaching, modeling, and assessing not textbooks and curriculum as much as health and safety these days, both for our physical health, of our students and staff, and our mental health. Our next slide is our Incident Command Structure, set in place in the spring as part of our crisis response. This structure shows our section leaders of operations, finance, logistics, and planning, as well as our division leaders as well, in the gray and yellow on those slides. Last week, this entire group had gathered at the district office for over a day and a half to compile all the information they gleaned and planned for our recommendation. These groups have been meeting for weeks with their respective teams and stakeholders. Thank you so much to all the members of this select group. At this point, I'd like to transition to Kim Kohler, our Incident Commander.
Thank you. As you can imagine, redesigning education is no small task. Between now and August 20th, the people that have been working for the last eight weeks on the task force will work with principals and leadership teams to develop specifics with whichever plan is chosen to move the district forward. In addition, the task force will ensure lines of communication with the board, students and families, staff, and the community remain open. For example, if students attend school in a blended A-B model, the task force will need to establish a process for assigning students to day A or B. They'll need to examine considerations for families, specific courses, and other factors, while also balancing enrollment among the days. They'll need to coordinate with student transit, and they'll need to develop communications tools, not only for students but for families and staff. Once that's decided, principals and building teams will then need to assign students to cohorts using the process, create a new master schedule at each school based on the cohorts, communicate new course assignments to staff, communicate information with students and families. As a task force, we know that there are literally hundreds of small processes and scenarios such as this that will need to be considered in the coming weeks. It's quite remarkable and humbling to consider that on this task force, we have 110 people or more who are volunteering their time. They're sharing their perspective so that this work can be complete and ready for school to reopen on September 1st. As Superintendent Johnson indicated, there are four sections of the task force, and at this time, we'd like each section leader to provide a brief overview of the work of their team, and we'll start, Abby, with the finance section.
Thank you, Kim. And so, it's logical that I would lead the finance section. And we really have two pieces that are critical to the finance section piece. I'm going to talk about the purchasing division because staffing is its own component, and Kay will share with us in a few minutes about that. But from the purchasing perspective, we have been working with the divisions to identify things that are different and things that we need to purchase due to the virus and reopening of schools. So the things I can tell you that have happened already are the purchase of the electromagnetic sprayers that will be used to assist with that deep cleaning that will be happening within the buildings. We're currently investigating and making recommendations on masks, and also thermometers and things like that, that we are going to be able to use for identifying, and the protocols that will be developed to monitor and to look at staff and to, again, ensure safety of our students and our families and our staff. The biggest piece under the finance section really comes down to the staffing piece. And so, Kay, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Thanks so much, Abby. So, the staffing division has been busy behind the scenes preparing the information that we believe will be critical to making the necessary staffing decisions once an instructional model has been determined. We believe that there's going to be additional staff that will be needed, but we also recognize that there's the potential to reevaluate the manner in which some of our staff are utilized and therefore have the ability to repurpose or reassign those duties and responsibilities. The staffing division has also reviewed the staff increment listing to evaluate which positions could be offered in the different instructional models, and trying to keep as many options available for students as possible. So for anybody who wouldn't know, the increment listing would be any of the positions we have that would oversee student activities, athletics, any kind of clubs, groups, organizations. And so, we've looked at that list to determine, depending on what model we would move forward, which of those positions could we still maintain and perhaps offer those activities to students in a different format. We've also communicated with all district employees regarding the potential leave options available through FMA, the ADA, and the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, also known as FFCRA, should they, being the employees, be in a position to not report physically back to work. At this point in time, the staffing division is eager to move forward with creating the action steps necessary to educating students in the fall. Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kay. I will talk a little bit about the logistics section. There are six divisions on the logistics section, and we heard in public comment quite a bit of concern about health and safety, and what would school look like, and how would school keep students and staff safe? So I think that some of the questions that you heard in public comment will be answered here. The facilities division, so far, their primary task has really been to determine how spaces could be used or reconfigured so that students are physically distanced in as many settings as possible. They're also determining modifications that need to be made, such as visual signs for distancing, replacing drinking fountains with bottle-filling stations, and so on. The transportation division has also studied what physical distancing can look like on the bus, and the impact that that will have on approximately 90 buses that run each morning and afternoon in O'Clare. As you can imagine, the health and safety division really has been quite busy. They've studied information from public health experts and educational agencies and have helped to determine how the information, how that information will impact the district. They've developed and will continue to develop guidelines and processes to make school as safe as possible for students and staff. The food and nutrition department or division has examined options for serving students in person and within the physical distancing guidelines. In addition, they're exploring how current regulations will allow us to serve students on their virtual learning days, and I know that is a question the community has asked as well. The communications division has established lines of communications for stakeholders and works with other divisions to develop timely and accurate communication once decisions are made. And the membership division coordinates meetings at the entire task force and ensures members have access to documents and the information they need. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim for the planning section.
Thanks, Kim. In the planning section, we have seven different divisions. Overall, two priorities for the division are equity, and the second is communication. As one of our public speakers mentioned, there were a lot...people were thrown into the fray, if you will, in the spring, and recognizing that communication needed to improve significantly. So that's something that all seven divisions have worked on. In those seven divisions, academics has really been working on a learning plan which ensures learning will happen every day. So in your five-day week, learning will happen each day, regardless of whether it's in person or whether it's remote. They've also worked to identify essential learning outcomes and preparing for professional development or instructional practices that are successful in both...in a flexible learning environment, both in person and remotely. They've worked on that A-B schedule, which is one of the pieces that was shared out on the document that was...that preceded this meeting. Meanwhile, for in-person learning, and meanwhile, a B-A schedule, if you will, for virtual contact time that will happen on same days but not at the same time. So one of the questions that came up with the public comment was, will we expect to be teaching students in seats in front of us and remotely at the same time? Nope, but we do have a model that prepares to support students in both environments at different times of the day. Academics is also working on what that...what virtual work would...with students, learning would look like, both asynchronously and synchronously, and really trying to shore up, like you said, those schedules for professional meetings, professional collaboration, and virtual contact time with students. Our social-emotional learning division has been focused on mental health supports for in-person and remote learning. So teletherapy is an example for the remote situation, and really recognizing that both adults and students, social-emotional learning needs to be attended to, because if adults are not in a good place with their social-emotional learning, students, they will have struggles and struggle to support students. And finally, leveraging PBIS Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, our framework for ensuring that we have a positive learning environment, regardless of where students are engaged in that learning. Our athletics and activities group has been monitoring guidance from the WIA and from the academic team in terms of co-curriculars, and music in particular has been a very area that has garnered a lot of attention. We expect that guidance to go back to the sports from the WIA to come out very soon. We know they have meetings coming up, and we are anticipating some announcement quickly. Student data, that team is focusing on assessments. How can we assess students, both effectively in person, but the greater challenge is how do you effectively assess students that are in a remote learning environment? We know that this is not an area that we have had a lot of experience with until the spring, though that is an area that they've been focusing on. They did...they started their work in June with teacher teams on grading, and as part of our report and the frequently asked questions, you'll note that we will be returning this school year to our traditional grading, which is standards-based at the elementary, and the A-throughout system at the secondary level. And they also are going to work...and have been working on attendance practices, because if we do have different models for in-person and remote learning, how do we...how do we work on attendance in those particular scenarios? The student services and special education team continue to work, and this work has already begun last spring, developing and supporting student service plans, which is the implementation plans for IEPs and 504 plan. And so, that team continues to refine that work. Our equity team has developed checklists for divisions to monitor their work to ensure that as we do this work across the 17 different divisions, we are ensuring that we are considering all stu...as many groups as possible, if not all, about how we might ensure that they have echoed opportunity to be participants in learning and their social-emotional growth. And they are developing currently models for that for the classroom level when our staff return. And finally, technology, you remember, that was at our last meeting, the one-to-one purchase for devices, and they have been facilitating that purchase. Your approval did not mean a purchase the next day. It took a little bit to get that out the door, and they are now monitoring and queuing up the processing timelines for when those devices arrive. And they're also working on opportunities for different ways that staff can livestream from their classroom if they have a need for both within the building and all the building, and so they're preparing for different models in the event that the staff are put in a situation where they need to support students in that way. With that, I'm going to pass it on to Mandy Van Vliet, who will give an update on the operations section.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I am Mandy Van Vliet, Director of Special Education for the district, and as Jim shared, I am serving as the section leader for the operations section. The operations section has three divisions, principals, board policy, and the liaison division. The principal division is made up of our building leaders, and they will be planning and preparing for the start of the school year. They'll be working with and taking direction from other divisions of the task force and essentially operationalizing the plan that is approved to welcome students back. The board policy division has been reviewing board policy to determine what policies may need to be reviewed, updated, or what new policies may need to be created to reflect the approved plan. The liaison division has been very busy reviewing the multitude of resources that are coming at school districts. The resources have been providing best practice and guidance anywhere from health and safety, different instructional models, social-emotional learning, equity, bus safety, and wearing masks. A few of the resources were cited tonight during the public comment that were reviewed and provided guidance to other divisions of the task force. These resources have been from local, state, nation, and worldwide organizations. A local department that we will continue to work with and provide guidance and information is the O'Clare City County Health Department. The O'Clare City Health County...sorry, the O'Clare City County Health Department is here with us tonight, and I would like to introduce them next. Here with us is Director Lyska Gizi and Assistant Director Marissa Stanley.
Thank you for inviting us to be part of this discussion, and thanks for all the work that the school district has done this spring and this summer, that the district, including families and staff and the administration, have been enormous partners with us, and we really want to acknowledge that this has not been an easy situation, and the partnership is important. I'll share with you just a few things tonight, but certainly Marissa and I are both available for questions as well. We do have more than 400 cases of COVID-19 in O'Clare County today, and two deaths. The disease data is continuing to be a concern. We do have data posted on our website that shows 10 measures that we are tracking weekly and updating on Wednesdays, and those disease measures in particular are ones that show us where we're at right now with COVID-19 in O'Clare. And of those, most of them are rent, so we are certainly in a place on our dashboard that we are concerned about COVID-19 spread in O'Clare County. And our expectation is that this will continue. Our goal and our partnership with you is about keeping the disease spread as slow as possible. What you see on your slide is a part of the plan that we have to progressively look at reopening, and if necessary, staying static or moving backwards as we consider the ways to keep the disease spread as slow as possible. In O'Clare, we do uniquely, for this side of the state, have a local public health order, and that local public health order is based on our data and really helps us have some structure as we think about what is available to us to do in ways that are safer. Our goal is to have school and have other activities happen in this community in ways that are as safe as possible. The order, as it is described, is an additional factor that O'Clare School District and all the school districts across O'Clare County are considering, and it's an important part of what we do here. In the order, there is a requirement for six feet distance between people and settings like school, and that's an example where the best practices are ones that we want for everybody that is in our community. And you can move to the next slide if someone's able to do that for me. This is the front cover, the front of our plan, and one of the graphics that we have in the plan to show that as we watch the data, as we watch those 10 metrics that I described, what we're doing is making decisions about what makes sense for our community related to reopening or holding tight, or perhaps having to consider ways that we move backwards in our plan because of disease spread happening so quickly. Our plan will change as time goes on. We review that every two weeks. We look at the data, and the public health order, which is an every-two-week order, is based on the data and the plan that you have in front of you. O'Clare School District, like all the school districts, is reviewing that plan and considering both the DPI best practices and the CDC best practices as they are moving forward to make arrangements in each individual school. In O'Clare, like all those districts, the requirements that are in our order do need to be met, and those requirements do include things like making sure that staff and students are screened for... and students are screened for any disease that may be present, any of the symptoms that may be connected to COVID nineteen. They are also required to make sure that six-foot distance is maintained and that's part of the work that's happening with the school district now is finding ways to do that. They're also required to make sure that they are considering policies to look at face masks for both the staff and the students in every school. There are many other requirements in that order and that's certainly something that I would encourage the school board to consider looking at. The order, along with this Respond Together Eau Claire plan, is how we are working together to move things forward. You can forward it to the next slide. This is a description of some of those things in the order and in our best practices that we are getting from D P I and C D C. Physical distance, as I mentioned, the six-foot distance between people when that is possible. There are some circumstances in schools and in other settings where those one-to-one services are required. Children with special needs, for example, it's not possible to be six feet apart. In all other circumstances, the expectation of the order is that there's six feet distance. There's also a requirement around increased cleaning and disinfection, the screening of student, staff and visitors that I spoke about earlier, and the immediate exclusion of anybody that's ill or high risk. We require schools and all other places in Eau Claire to work with us and having easy ways for contact tracing. So for example, having small groups of students regularly together mean that that group, if there is a positive in that group, has only those contacts, those close contacts potentially to follow up with if there's a case. Critically important in the school setting and something that we've seen with disease spread and settings even in Eau Claire, like daycare. We also have again a limit on public gatherings. This came up during the public comment period. Our public gathering section is for things like sporting events, choir events, those things that bring groups of people together for an amount of time that are beyond a classroom. And those situations, the limits would be in place for public gatherings. We're strongly encouraging schools to limit any of those outside large gatherings. The health department is counting on the schools and the families in those schools to really work with us. This is a disease that started seven months ago in the U.S. and we are learning a lot as the disease progresses. There are many things that we are still learning and while it's frustrating for families, for teachers and for the administration, we need to be nimble and we need to adjust as is necessary. What we don't want to happen is disease in this community in a way that we can't control. So I'll stop there and I know there's additional content with the slides, but certainly we have it.
Thank you, Ms. Giezy. As Ms. Giezy shared, Respond Together Eau Claire provides direction to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen in our community. Additionally, in late June, the Wisconsin D P I released a guiding document that you can see here titled Education Forward. This document provides guidance for school districts across the state as we all examine options for reopening our schools. In addition, Education Forward directs school districts to partner with our local health departments and to comply with all local health department orders. So districts in Eau Claire County are fortunate that the Eau Claire County Health Department was very conscientious in following the guidelines within Education Forward to make it easy for school districts in Eau Claire County to comply with the requirement to to follow those local health orders. And really, our job as a task force was to put these two pieces together to try to come up with a solution to redesign education in Eau Claire. And what we did is, as a task force, we studied information and provided and the provided feedback. We also received input from families and staff members through surveys. A survey was administered in late June into early July and focus groups as late as last week, consisting of students, staff and families with children at a variety of ages. We've met with superintendents throughout Eau Claire County and we've used tools provided by the D P I to examine options, all as we maintained this commitment to rigorous expectations for student learning. And we were charged with taking all of that information into consideration while developing a solution that fit within the requirements of the order from the Eau Claire City County Health Department. Some of the feedback that we received through the surveys in late June and the focus groups in early to mid-July can be seen here on this slide. Throughout the four thousand, I think it was four thousand and fifty-four surveys or fifty-three surveys that were completed and more than a hundred people in focus groups, the priorities were really quite clear. The top priorities stated were health and safety, academics, social emotional health, consistency for families and consistency, consistent experiences and expectations for classes. I included in the middle column, you can see some of the data that from the survey, eighty-three percent of the respondents indicated classrooms should be sanitized daily. Sixty-five percent support daily symptom checking at school. Forty-eight percent were concerned that public health regulations would not be followed. Thirty-five percent are concerned about their students readjusting to school life and twenty-three percent reported concerns about childcare. When asked about a preferred learning model for the 2020-2021 school year, ninety percent of families indicated that they would like some sort of face-to-face learning during that school year. Fifty-two percent said face-to-face learning only. Thirty-eight percent supported a blended model and six percent indicated virtual learning only. The charge then was to take this feedback and again incorporate it into a model that complied with the requirements within that city county health order. As the task force looked at Respond Together Eau Claire, D P I's Education Forward and feedback from stakeholders, it was clear, we weren't simply working to reopen schools. We are redesigning education. To give you an idea of what redesigning education entails, we've taken the requirements within the order and indicated which divisions needed to consider those requirements in their plans and recommendations for the reopening of school. Some of the connections are clear. I'd expect, for example, that many of you would expect the health and safety division, represented by the heart icon over on the right-hand side, to be impacted by most of the requirements. If you follow that health and safety division column down, you'll see that's exactly the case. Physical distancing, increased cleaning and disinfecting, screening students and staff, exclusion of the ill or high-risk, contact tracing, self-dispensing of food and one-on-one personal services all influenced the plans and recommendations of that division. However, many may be surprised to see the number of requirements that influenced staffing, which is represented by the four people in the second to last column that you see there or the amount of impact physical distancing had on academics, which is represented by the book. So these divisions, as you heard from the section leaders as we updated you, these divisions have really been looking at how do the requirements impact school as we knew it and how do we redesign education within school as we will now know it? And that has really been the charge over the last eight weeks of the task force and will continue to be the charge and, you know, through the remainder of the summer until school reopens. So after expand examining the options based on the feedback from stakeholders and guidance from public health and educational agencies, we developed this framework that I know you've seen before. It's based on Respond Together Eau Claire and includes three scenarios for learning. If we are safer at home, all students will learn virtually all week. In steps A through E on Respond Together Eau Claire Plan, students would rotate between face-to-face and virtual learning in predetermined cohorts while specifically identified students may have more of a one-hundred percent face-to-face look to their learning. And when we reach step F, where COVID is no longer a concern, we'll return to one-hundred percent face-to-face learning for students, although I would say that we have learned so much in the last six months that even when we return to one-hundred percent face-to-face learning, education will look different. We've improved our practices and we've learned quite a bit. Families have told us time and again that in whatever plan we develop, consistency and predictability are important to them. Although Respond Together Eau Claire has numerous steps, we felt that creating a learning model with three clear options would offer some predictability and consistency for families, which is one of the reasons steps A through E are grouped together. And what we'd like to do now and hopefully to be able to answer some of the questions that were raised during public comment is turn it over to Jim, who would like to talk a little bit about what each of these scenarios would look like for kids.
Thanks, Kim. So as we work through the next three slides, we're going to talk first slide about the hundred percent face-to-face, then hundred percent virtual, the next slide, and then blended, the blended environment. And so as we walk through this, we want to be clear that all three slides, you'll see the same text and that is, learning happens every day. So as we prepare our instruction, there's a focus on that where the learning takes place may be different, but that the outcomes are not going to change. And so in all learning environments, there will be a focus on equity to ensure that all students in what we can control have an equitable opportunity to succeed academically and socially and emotionally. In terms of essential learning, we've already have teacher teams that have begun working on essential learning overviews, what is most crucial and team members will work then when they complete those with the, those representatives will then represent every other teacher in the district. So they will then, after those have been completed, work with their colleagues to share those outcomes. If you're wondering what is essential, that is considered what is enduring and what is relevant learning that prepares them for the next steps. Teachers will also receive training, as I mentioned earlier, on effective assessment practices for flexible learning environments. So what evidence do we collect and how do we collect it to ensure students are learning, whether they are standing in the, or sitting in the seats in front of us or whether they are working synchronously or asynchronously at home? Also, we will work with teachers on effective instructional strategies. We plan to begin this early next month for both learning environments for both at-home learning and and face-to-face. We have learned a lot in the spring. We have a lot more that we can learn and we've begun to queue up that training through a couple of different vendors to support our own teachers and some of the trainings that our own teachers will be sharing with our colleagues as well. So we have three tiers of instruction, instructional training that we're going to be talking about soon. And then we also learned that communication needs to be streamlined. As Kim mentioned earlier, the consistency was one of those things we heard from the, from families on the focus groups. And so communicate regularly with families regarding learning outcomes and progress. That will be the same in all three scenarios. And that is the focus of our work is what again is, how do we actively support essential learning for all students? How do we know that they're learning it? How are we going to, how are we going to effectively instruct it regardless of the, the, whether it's at home or in person? And then how do we continually communicate with families throughout the process? In the hundred percent face-to-face, this is what we provided for, is, this is how we provide instruction for years. I mean, if we get to step F, we know how to do that. So that if we refer back to the slide right before this, this is step F. The task force was confident with this model and really focused their attention effort on the next two, which was the hundred percent virtual and then the blended, which we'll talk about. So in the hundred percent virtual model, the focus again are the same. It is equity, essential learning outcomes, assessments to measure student learning, high effective instructional strategies and regular communication. In a five-day week, learning will happen every, there will be five days of learning every day. We learned from the past spring and we have, we have a model in place to improve this and guaranteeing students in one way have contact from instructors multiple times each week. We did, we learned that, that the, as the speaker at the beginning talked about, that we were thrown into the, the environment that we had in the spring, that we need to set up a model that's more predictable to ensure that we have regular contact with our students. Instructors, instructors will have in this model an instructional schedule. We have a framework, but that schedule needs more input from teachers and administrators before it's finalized and will be available to their, and they will be available to their students each day through what we're calling virtual contact time. Devices, of course, were approved, as I mentioned, reminded you earlier, but at our last meeting for all students to be able to communicate with their teachers and each other. And that was one of the big pushes for having them at the early grade levels, pre-K through two, which was new to us, is so that we could have that regular and reliable communication method between staff and families and their children. Finally, the blended model, which was also mentioned earlier in the, on the comment, again, restrictions dictate what this will look like. I heard comments about number of students that are allowed and I heard the number hundred and I heard several other things. The number we keep focusing on is six. Six feet, social distancing in all directions and we have to create an environment that allows for that. And when we cannot be social distanced, then that is where we require masks. We focus on working with cohorts of students, trying to create as small of a number of students as possible. So in the instance that someone tests positive, the contact tracing can be focused as well. And we schedule students throughout the day and their movement in a way to mitigate student interactions. We also want to examine instructional practices that are conducive to this environment. So many of our teachers know like we can't have elbow partners anymore and we can't be knee-to-knee, eye-to-eye type activities. So we're going to have to make some changes to how we instruct based on having six-foot social distancing. And again, need to have controlled transitions. So if we do move students about a building, especially at the secondary level to different regions of the building, we move as a cohort and we control those transitions so that we have students that, we mitigate the number of interactions students have with each other outside of their cohort. Instructionally, again, we focus on equity, learning, assessments to measure student learning, highly effective instructional strategies and regular communication again. Really, this is the combination of the priorities. So there will be in a five-day week, there will be five days of learning. Given that a student has, some of that learning takes place at home, they may do a couple of days when they're at home in one class and a couple of days in the next, they may compress it, they may choose to spread it out. They will add that flexibility. The staff plan for instruction is that, is that in-person and remote, we will have in-person instruction in a day. So if you can consider a teacher that normally teaches five hours in a day, has a duty, has a prep, that they still will have their in-person teaching during the day, but that duty time will be changed to, instead of traditional duties, will provide an opportunity for staff to connect with students where they are able to check in with students who are, who are not in the building that day. So really a shift of how time is used and that student interaction can be both synchronous and asynchronous. So students that are not in the building will be able to have some activities that are prepared by the teacher and that ahead of time that they can do on their own time, but they can also do that check-in. Teachers also could create during those virtual contact times, live check-ins with students so they, they can have, they can actually maybe do like a mini lesson or just simply have a conversation with students about what is, what has been working and what has been a challenge to a student. And that'll happen over the course of the week. So if you have students in group A and group B, they will have the same instruction, just in a different order. So student, for example, if we have that A B model where student and group, students in group A are in-person on a Monday, Tuesday, students in group B will have that same instruction on Thursday, Friday. It will be exactly the same. And then when the other groups are home, they will have that independent work with, that is prepared by teachers and then will be able to contact teachers for feedback during the virtual contact time. Staff will be available to students in both groups, as I mentioned, we call that the in-person schedule and the virtual contact. So it's really making sure that we create an environment where students do not, do not disappear in terms of our communications with each other and provide some regular expectations so that we can ensure students are safe, both emotionally and academically throughout the, throughout the school year. With that, Kim is going to take and bring this back toward the chart that you've all seen and really kind of wrap a bow around kind of what the plan is, but additionally give some context to the different grade levels and how the three different models play out as the, and why the different grade levels look like they do in terms of the columns. So Kim, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. So once that So once that framework with the three blue columns, and the details that Jim shared were developed, we sought more feedback from students, families, and staff through focus groups. And we used that feedback to determine what blended learning would look like for students at each level. And I'll briefly walk you through this proposed plan, as I know that you'd like time for discussion and questions tonight. So we will start with the pre-kindergarten students that are on the left-hand side, and then work our way right. The pre-K students will be placed in cohorts, and in this proposed model, they would attend school full days on either Monday and Tuesday, or on Thursday and Friday. These two full days of face-to-face learning are the equivalent of the previous four-half-day model, so no virtual learning is required for pre-K students in this model. From there, I'm going to move to the first and second grade column, which is right in the middle. The, the proposal indicates that all first and second graders would attend face-to-face Monday and Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday, and they would learn virtually on Wednesday. Although we've heard from some families that they would like students to learn face-to-face every day, physical distancing would require us to nearly double our square footage, which simply isn't feasible. By repurposing space, spaces, however, we can accommodate two grade levels in this fashion, and we're proposing first and second grade for two reasons. First, the first-grade curriculum focuses heavily on foundational reading and math skills, and after talking with principals, leaders, and certified staff, first grade was continually identified as the most important grade for, for skill development. As a result, first grade was identified as one grade that would attend four days. At the same time, those staff members recognized that incoming second graders missed a quarter of their first grade year. And to ensure that those students had access to those essential foundational skills, they were identified as the second group that would attend four days. In addition, childcare was a concern that was consistently expressed by parents in the survey, in focus groups, and since the proposal was released. And we recognize that pre-K, kindergarten, first and second grade students will require childcare. Pre-K families needing childcare are likely already connected to a daycare or childcare facility. Incoming kindergarten students are still currently connected to childcare, or are only a few weeks removed if they don't attend during the summer. Our hope is that those existing relationships with daycare or childcare will ease the burden on families, in helping them find childcare during the school year. However, families with first and second grade children could be a year or more removed from a childcare connection, and we recognize not only the additional burden these families will have, but also the safety concerns that would exist if childcare could not be arranged by those families. So based on the curriculum factors and the childcare issues, first and second grade were identified to attend Monday and Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday. Then if we move to the kindergarten column and the third through 12th grade columns at the same time, you will see the same structures proposed for each of these groups. These students would be assigned to a cohort to attend in-person with teachers two days per week, and learn virtually the remaining three days. Students would be assigned a Monday, Tuesday, would be assigned Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday for in-person instruction, and learning on the remaining three days would be virtual. We recognize that there will be some students in kindergarten or third through 12th grade who may attend more than two days, or who may need to attend more than two days. Students who receive special services, such as students with IEPs or limited English proficiency, will work with their support teams to determine programmatic options that meet their needs. And finally, we heard in public comment, some families feel most comfortable with having their students attend 100% virtually, and not be face-to-face with an instructor in the school building. We do have a 100% virtual option for K-12 students, if a family is interested in that And so with that, we want to thank you for allowing us to share tonight, and we would like to open the, or open the discussion and answer any questions that you may have.
Kim, thank you so much for the presentation, and to each of our directors and presenters. Thank you for the hard work that you've done. I can speak for myself for the amount of time and thought that I've put into it over the last five days especially, and I can only imagine the countless hours that you have put in thinking about it, developing it, discussing with the city-county health department, and working with people across the district to try to find a solution. As I think about it as a parent, I can tell you, I'm not happy with any solution. If I think about my, my kids going to school all virtual, I don't like it. I'm not happy. It's not what I think is best for them. If I think about my student, my kids going all face-to-face, I don't like it. I don't think it's safe. I'm not happy. And if I think about in the middle, there's all of these different concerns and problems that, that you, that you're addressing, that we've heard tonight, and I'm not happy. I like to think of myself as being somebody who can look at a system, a series of options, and say, this is the one that makes the most sense for the most people, this is the best. And I don't think that, I can't find it. There's not one that is, that is, this is the good one, because we're not in a situation that's good. This pandemic has changed our lives in negative ways. And I know I'm sort of rambling on here, but I just want to express my gratitude for the work that you have done, for trying to sift through any number of bad options, and try to find one that you feel makes sense. I know we're going to have a ton of questions for you tonight, and I just want you to hear that gratitude from me, and all the work that you're doing. We heard a lot in our work session about expert understanding, and I appreciate you lending your expertise to this process, all of you that were involved in the task force and in the design of this work. As I open it up for questions, I might ask the first one, but as I open it up for questions, I'll ask for my colleagues to remember that it is possible, just from the volume of information that we were asking for over the last several days, that we all have a long list of questions. So as you're recognized to ask questions, maybe consider just doing one or two at a time, and then coming back around, so that we can make sure that everybody, I'm, I'm committed, this is already a late meeting, I'm committed to making sure we have the discussion that we need tonight going forward, so we will get it back around. I'll, I'll ask the first question of Kim and the rest of the directors. Why, why this blended model? We heard a lot of speakers tonight, we ourselves know that we've got numbers that are perhaps rising, so why blended as opposed to going only virtual to start the year, as some of our public commentators asked? And also, why not have more? And I think, Kim, you touched on that a little bit with the, the social distancing issues, but, but why not have more days per week? Why not have everyone go three, or four, or five days, like some of our public commentators also asked? You know, we had information on both sides. So why is this blended model the one that the administration recommends tonight, as opposed to all virtual or more in face-to-face?
Jim, I'll start from the health and safety standpoint, and then if you want to, if you want to continue from the instructional standpoint of, of why a blended model, we can tag-team this. So from a health and safety standpoint, what we need to be able to do is ensure that we have sanitized the building between cohorts. So I'll use Prairie Ridge as an example. Typically Prairie Ridge offers morning classes and afternoon classes. But what we need to do right now with the pandemic is, we need to, we need to, between a cohort of students, we need to sanitize and disinfect the building so that new students can come into that space, not having the previous students' germs in that location. So what would happen on Monday and Tuesday is, the cohorts of children would attend, and then on Wednesday, when everybody is learning virtually, our buildings and grounds crew will go in and do a really good deep clean, and also use an electrostatic sprayer that will get all of the contact surfaces. The, the sprayer kills the coronavirus in 60 seconds. If it's in contact with the surface for 60 seconds, it will kill coronavirus. And then we know, then, if you take that back to contact tracing, Dr. Nardine, if you attend on Monday and Tuesday, and then you test positive, but I attended on Thursday, we are not, we are not in contact with one another. And we do the same thing, so we do that on Wednesday, we'd also do it on Thursday. The reason that Prairie Ridge would be going full days instead of half-days is because we cannot do that between a morning and afternoon class. It does take some time to do that. So that's, that's one of the reasons, between the cohorts, that it would be two days a week versus four. Another reason really comes down to space. Because of physical distancing, we are, the capacity in our classrooms is roughly half, sometimes maybe a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, depending on the size of the classroom. And so to be clear with that, we can only welcome half the students in the classroom, in the buildings at a time. We need, we simply need the space. So with this model, we are repurposing spaces in the building, and spaces that are typically not a classroom may become a classroom, and our buildings and grounds department is working to convert those spaces. But if we had everybody in the building five days a week, or if we scheduled any overlap at all between groups, we would not be able to meet the requirement of physical distancing. Jim, do you want to talk about instruction?
Yep. So the, the, you asked two questions, why, why blended, and why not, you know, the three versus four versus five days? And as Kim mentioned, the second question really is about that space, the fact that we have to have that social distancing, which requires us to space. So that's, that's really that second question. But that, that first question, we know that we want, is, we know that we want to be as in-person as possible, and 90% of our families wanted some sort of in-person option, whether it be blended or be all, all face-to-face. And so we knew in this model, we could at least have two touches per week, if you will, two instructional opportunities on Monday and Tuesday for one group, and on Wednesday, or on Thursday and Friday for the other. I know at the secondary level, they even explored potentially like a block schedule, but we went away from that concept because that would only allow for one contact a week. We really wanted to be able to, on a social and emotional level, to be able to connect with students as frequently as possible. We had looked at models, as Kim had mentioned, we even looked at like full weeks, so bring group A in for a full week, bring group B in for another, the, the second week. But the amount of time in between that, where we could lose contact with students, personal contact, that in-person contact really was not something, the feedback we got was just that it was not a model that could be sustainable and supportive of our students. It started to look much more like what we had last spring. The other thing, at the pre-K level, one of the things that we've been looking at prior to this year was duration, which was really looking at students being in our schools for full days. We were looking at a grant through the Head Start. That grant was not, was not something that we were awarded. We knew that by, by compressing early learning, because we cannot have two groups in, in on one day, I mean, it actually does allow us the opportunity to simulate what duration would look like. First, duration would actually happen for probably four days, not for two days, but at least does give us a step in that direction, so it does provide that opportunity and experience. And finally, the other thing to keep in mind is, if this proposal is approved, there's a whole slew of details underneath here that still need to be worked out by our staff and our, our administrators. The teams that we're working with, given that really what we're looking at is a framework, and a lot of the details, there's some answers that we have a, we have a strong sense of where things will go, but we're going to rely heavily on our staff in terms of what that, how that instructional model takes shape. Really, right now, what you're looking at is, if you think of building a house, you're really looking at a sketch. You're really not looking at furnishing and all the details that our staff are going to try to bring to that over the course of just a few weeks, which is going to be pretty rapid work that has to be played.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from my colleagues. Right now, just from watching the unmutes, I've got Commissioner Lyons, followed by Commissioner Harder, and then Dr. Johnson, you'll be after that. So Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you. So I understand that there's a lot of details that, that need to be worked out, but I, I'm really interested in hearing a little bit more about, getting a little bit more information about transportation and busing, if you could.
I can, I can speak to that. So transportation and busing is under the logistics division, and we're working very closely with student transit. In fact, Jim Fai is the division leader for transportation, and they are committed, they're, they are working with O'Clare City County Health Department regarding physical distancing on the bus, and will be working to ensure that students are physically distanced on the bus. They also have a plan to clean and sanitize the bus, so that, you know, it, we can work to mitigate any spread of disease. We are having conversations about masks on the bus, and whether or not that is something that will be, you know, something that we will consider. Also, we talked with the health department about treating a household as a unit versus a student as a unit. So as an example, if we lived in the same household, we could share a seat, because we already live in the same household, and we're sharing germs anyway. But if, if you were my neighbor, we would need to be in separate seats six feet apart from one another. So those are some of the things that we're working on with transportation. It is, it is probable that we will not have the capacity on the buses that we would, well, we know we won't have the capacity that we typically have, and it's probable that we will need to ask some families to potentially provide transportation on their own. And we know that some families already do that and don't take advantage of the bus, so for some families, that'll just be a confirmation of, no, my child's not riding the bus this year, or my child hasn't ridden the bus for the five years they've been eligible to. For other families, it might be a consideration of, would you be willing to volunteer to carpool or transport with your neighbor? And those are details that are still to be worked out.
Commissioner Harder?
Thank you, and thanks, yes, I'll just reiterate, the thanks to everybody who's worked on this plan, it's the unimaginable amount of work and thought that's gone into this, very appreciative. That said, obviously, it's a, I mean, we've all said it a few times tonight, that this is a really pretty extraordinary decision to bring to a school board. It has repercussions for our local economy, it has, you know, from certain perspectives, life and death decisions for, for, for both our students, our staff, and our community. So from, from the safety, the health and, and safety aspect of this is, is what my question is focusing on here. Both from the perspective of students and staff, I'm, you know, as we, as we almost always do here on the board, we, we look to the expertise of others. In this case, I really look to, to our, our county health officials, and I wonder if Ms. Gieske could speak to the question of both student health and, and staff health, in terms of the different options that are on the table and the options that, that is being recommended here.
Thank you for that question. Certainly, student health and staff health are critically important. We, we are confident that the work that the school district team has done is putting in place those measures that are going to be most protective for both. So the six-feet distance is our best protection between people for spread of disease, and that's why it's been so importantly a centerpiece of our order, but also a centerpiece of the conversations with schools. It does create a lot of challenges for schools, and you've heard that described, but it is our most protective way to make sure that disease spread doesn't happen, or is minimal when it does happen. It's also the most protective thing for the school, because if we have people closer than six feet, and we have a positive case, that whole classroom may be considered close contacts and are not able to be in school for 14 days, and we certainly, at all costs, would be avoiding, trying to avoid that situation. As you heard described, those smaller cohorts and the six feet will help ensure that the best chance is there to not have that two-week gap in being able to learn. We've already had daycares that have had to close for two weeks, or have large parts of their classrooms closed for two weeks because of that kind of exposure. The risk to students and staff is, of course, elevated when there are pre-existing conditions or situations that make people more at risk, and that's certainly something that... And that's certainly something that is importantly needing to be taken into account. We also know that the history of this disease so far, and it came up during public comment, is that most children are not ones where we've seen serious disease, but we have in Wisconsin seen children with COVID-19. We've seen deaths in young age groups under the age of 18. And it's not a simple, there's no simple answer to say it's safe for kids or their staff and faculty to be in school. So again, the measures that are in the order and that Eau Claire School District is taking seriously around making sure that anybody with symptoms stays home and making sure that the groups stay as small as possible and physically distanced are critically important.
Thank you for that. Can I ask just a follow-up question then on the question of masks and, and the particular way that we're talking about masks with this recommendation?
So the Health Department's strong recommendation is that everybody wear a mask, a face covering in situations where six feet may not be easy to maintain. We certainly strongly encourage all schools to consider that. It will help decrease transmission of COVID-19. And where it is possible to do that, I would strongly recommend that face masks be part of what is considered in the, in classroom situations. There's very few situations where face masks can't be successfully utilized and there are some other options, but the six feet plus a face mask is really our best way to make sure that we're not getting others sick.
So I'd like to follow up if I may, Commissioner Harder. We heard several people ask for requiring it. Over this last week in Eau Claire, many of our retailers have just flat out said, you can't come in if you're not wearing a mask. Now, I haven't been into any of those retailers lately. I was isolating with my family in the woods of Montana. Thank goodness for Wi-Fi to keep up with this. But this recommendation does not have us requiring all, let's say, everyone inside to wear masks at all time with the exceptions of, say, you know, meals or athletic activities or something. Why, why wouldn't we require that? And that might be for you, Ms. Gieske, it might be for our administration to talk about. Why wouldn't we just say it's required as opposed to strongly recommended?
I guess, could I, this is Lori. Might I, if it's not anything too much, in the responses, could we also consider children's developmental levels?
Great point. Thank you, Dr. Beekah.
And Kim, would you like me to respond first?
So I was going to say, if you want to, if you want to respond to part of it, and then I'll talk a little bit about the developmental levels and some of the things we're investigating.
Wonderful. I think people likely know that there's been a lot of conversation about a requirement for face mask use in Eau Claire. That has happened for a number of weeks now, but more intensely the last week. We are in conversation with partners about whether or not that is an appropriate next-step strategy. It is something that is happening in other communities in Wisconsin and across the nation. We do know that use of face masks, the research already, despite this disease being new to arrive, is already showing really clear indication that that will make a difference. My strong encouragement is for you to consider any way that you can make that part of the practice of the school.
And then I can speak a little bit to what we're looking at as far as the developmental levels of children or even some of the very specific needs of, of children. We have been working to find some solutions for students, for example, that are learning to read facial expressions. So this would be very, very young children who are learning to read nonverbal cues as well as verbal cues, or sometimes students with IEPs. We spend a lot of time, you know, helping them look at the expression on somebody's face while also listening to their words. And there are masks that have a clear portion in them and they're specifically used in situations that I know of for deaf and hard of hearing, community members. So we are exploring those as options in some settings for our staff. Staff have also asked about face shields and we did talk about that with the Health Department earlier, I guess it would have been last week. And really were advised, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Lisca, but shields are not a substitute for a mask. Physical distancing first, if you can't, then a face mask. And then it sounded like shields came in a distant third in that, you know, maybe in combination with a mask, but not in replacement of a mask. However, there are some masks also that folks are using that might look more like a head covering, so they have some cloth underneath to present, prevent the, you know, any, any liquids from, from leaving the mask area. And that's something that we just started looking at today, but certainly those are options that we are exploring.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I, I would like my first, first two questions to kind of just focus on the instructional model as, as presented to the community. And I guess for me, the, the thought process here that first and second grade are, is the limited time span of, of critical periods of, for development, I, I find a little bit, a little bit troublesome, but also given the fact that across the K-12 system, all students lost a 25% portion of their instructional pieces. And so that opportunity for, we know also the window of opportunity for learning and development from a catch-up standpoint is, is extended, especially in, in certain domains. And one of those domains where we find limited opportunities of development after a certain period of time is that affective social emotional piece. And so I'm, I'm a little bit, I, I just want to know besides the management, just because your case was the management of numbers and then first and second grade missed 25% and that's a key parameter. But the domains of development, especially a critical period spanned beyond ages, ages, ages six and seven. So why would one, if you could gather, one would perceive from the community that the learning experience or those opportunities of learning would be, they're, they're not placed upon a level of importance comparative to first and second grade. And then my second, my, part of my second question here is also, when we talk about this, this online platform, I, I guess for me, I'm under the assumption moving forward with an online platform, this is a universal online platform, K through 12. Therefore, that parents are based on the expertise or the comfortability of the teacher have different platforms. And so could you just address one and two questions for me? Thank you.
You bet. I can start with Kim, and if you want to add, you can, but I can start it off, that's okay. So we know the Department of Public Instruction has particular benchmarks when they do the school report card. And one of those big benchmarks is third grade for foundational reading skills. And we know that if, and the reason why that benchmark exists is because we know that if students are not on a pace for their reading development by third grade, their chances of catching up diminish quickly. It's not that they can't, but it becomes a really big hill to climb. And so that's the reason for really wanting students to get off to a good foundational start in first and second grade. First grade, as we, like Kim had mentioned earlier, when we talked with our, our staff, that we have a variety of different meetings, and this hasn't just been within the last month, it's, we, these are conversations we've had over a long period of time. First grade is seen as one of the most intense foundational building years that students have. And so granted, yes, other, other, at second grade, you know, they miss that quarter of a year, as did others. We would love them all to be in the building, all 100% of students. But again, we keep going back. If there's one number stuck in my head, it's six. Six feet of distance. And that's six feet of distance in each direction around a student limits the number. So we really do calculations. The teams look at the square footage in a room and they, they divide that square footage by 144, which is six feet in each direction or a 12 by 12 box, if you will. And that really dictates how many students we can put into an instructional space. And so we would love to have more than those grades. We are really limited by the number six. And so that's part of that. And so it is both that key benchmark here by getting there by third grade, which puts that focus on first and second grade, in particular first, because we know they have the greatest curricular demand in terms of setting up those skills. And then having that distance means that other, that we, we can't have all the other grades involved. If we have to pick one, we want to make sure we have the one that gets people, our students off on the strong footing at the beginning.
Jim, could I just, could I just interject because that kind of segues into kind of, I think, one of my other concerns. I think during these unprecedented times, I think all of us as educators, we, we have to reimagine and put our creative lens on. And so when we're confined to this idea of six feet, are we taking into consideration the both, the utilization of both indoor and outdoor spaces? So, yeah, so what, so one of the things that's happening on a national level is this idea of actually, how do we reim, how do we reimagine the learning space if outdoor space is available for that piece? And so I'm, I'm just curious if we're using the six feet model, if that's taken into consideration, both indoor and outdoor space? Thank you.
Yep. So we're going to transition to Kim about space mining. As we do this though, as you think about outdoor spaces, don't forget that all but about two months of our school year have very inclement weather. Let's not forget polar vortexes. You think about, like, right now, it's very difficult to think about polar vortex, but that was a reality. So we always have to think about what is our, the different types of weather systems that we will have. Kim, I'll let you talk about space mining.
Yeah, I'm, I'm from, I'm from the south, so the polar vortex, I, I'm hoping that actually I'd never experience that 50-year phenomenon ever again. So yeah, I, I get that. Thank you.
So that is one of our challenges in space mining is when we are looking to space mine, the information that we're getting is that this, what we're looking for is not a short-term solution, that we likely will be in that either safer at home or A through E, at least through first semester, if not into second semester. And so when we're looking at outdoor spaces, we really could then be talking about November or December or even into January, which makes that a little bit difficult. However, we are space mining. And so space mining is kind of this art of finding, you know, other spaces. We've explored community options for space mining. You know, are there places within the community that we might be able to house some classrooms? We've also looked just within the district creatively at how we can use spaces. Right now, with this plan, every student can attend, we believe, can attend their homeschool. So if your student is currently, you know, a Northwoods Elementary student, they would stay at Northwoods Elementary. Some of the other options that we've looked at might, might require students to attend a different physical space when we space mine. And so we, we kind of drew the line at, let's try to keep kids in the school that they're in now. From a space standpoint, we might have some other options, but I'm going to defer now to Kay to talk about how every time we create a new space, we create a new need for an adult to be with, with children. So if you think about kindergarten and first grade attending all four days, we are doubling the, the space that kindergarten and first grade, I'm sorry, not kindergarten, first and second grade, sorry, first and second grade attending all four days, we double the amount of space they take. So we went from four, perhaps four first grade classrooms to now eight spaces where first graders are, and each of those spaces needs an adult. So Kay, are you available to talk about the impact on staffing with those decisions?
I am. Thanks, Kim. So you're correct. Every time we do space mining, easy for me to say, that creates additional emphasis on our staffing. And part of the reason that, as I had indicated in my introduction comments, saying that the staffing division was eager to start moving forward with planning for educating students in the fall is because so much of what the staffing division needs to do in terms of staffing, the details and, and the nitty-gritty and the specifics for each building all depends heavily on what happens here tonight. And so we've done as much as we can behind the scenes to prepare for that information, to get us ready so that when a decision is made, we can start working on that and trying to roll that out. But in terms of having specific plans for each building under different models, it was, it simply just wasn't feasible to do that. So that's why the, that's why the committee is eager for decisions to be made so that we can start moving forward because there are so many questions that staff have about, you know, where they'll be, how it'll look, how many kids, which section of building will they be in. I mean, there's a lot of questions that people have that we would love to be able to give responses to, but at this point in time, we just don't have those answers because we don't have the decision to be able to move forward. So we're looking forward to that, but know that every time that we do an additional space mining piece, it does need additional staff. So we'll either need to look to repurpose the staff that we currently have and assign them a variety of different roles and utilize them in a different format than what we would have previously, or be prepared to secure additional staff into the district. And we're, we're ready to do both, we just need to go ahead and start working on it.
And then that second, that second question, just about the universal online platform, because I, I, yeah, I guess for me, as one of the things that I contain, as I consider, consider making a decision, if there's, if there's not a universal online platform for both staff and families to use, it's somewhat of a non-starter to just to re, to reimagine, I think, virtual learning because of the 59 emails that I received and also reaching out to the SEPTA group for our parents with, students with disabilities, the remote online platform and being able to navigate that and not having any, any, any type of guidance, that's, that was somewhat, somewhat disappointing to hear. So just that, that piece, if you could address, thank you.
So we have Canvas at the secondary level. Next week, we have a team of teachers, many teachers coming in together, I think about 20 of them, reviewing a platform for the elementary level. Right now, if you, CSO is one of those common products that people hear of, and Canvas also has an option for us to use at the elementary level. So that at the secondary level, Canvas will be the platform we will use for communicating with our students. At the elementary level, that platform, as I mentioned, will be adopted next week. And that will be the interface with our staff, with families and students in terms of communicating expectations and providing online resources. Now, the 100% virtual option, as we mentioned earlier, I know there are some, I was looking, we're kind of monitoring some side conversation too. We know that 52% of our families said they wanted face-to-face learning and 38% a blended model, which means a blended, of course, has face-to-face and has virtual. So 90% wanted some, either full or some, face-to-face. But the, we also know that a small number wanted that virtual-only experience. And so we have, given the number of staff, we, our students, if that 6% actually do apply to, to be, to be virtual, that's going to be a significant number of students, which will require a significant number of staff. And our staff, as we've worked on those essential learning outcomes, staff supporting virtual learning and only, and staff supporting in-person learning are still going to be focusing on the same outcomes. They're still going to be focusing on delivering through a consistent platform. But the interaction with staff, like if you are face-to-face, will be in-person. If you are blended, it'll be in-person and through that platform. And if you are virtual-only, it'll be primarily through that platform. We do have some other options when we get to the secondary level, especially for some unique electives where we might support that through the same platform that is used with, with the Eau Claire Virtual School, the Pearson platform. We would work with our teachers at that level to determine which they feel is the best, but it would be, that would only be a value add. And we would integrate that through that consistent Canvas platform to be a way for them to get through there. But, so we will have a consistent platform at the elementary level and a separate one at the secondary level, and it'll be one we will expect all staff to use to support students.
Thanks, Jim. And just to clarify that, that particular, it's, it's Canvas, also our secondary students should be able to access Canvas for all of their virtual work or each of their classes and whatever the chosen one is for elementary school.
Yep.
They'll be able to do that. And then the all-virtual option, it might be the third platform, sort of like what we're doing with the, the Virtual Academy, Virtual School, sorry. Okay.
But we will still, we will still likely, they'll walk into that through the Canvas and then access it. So it'll come through the same, same, you walk through the same door, but you might have a door inside the door so that, so that families will have the same. but you might have a door inside the door, so that, so that families will have the same avenue into their learning, regardless of what, uh, regardless of what choice that they made.
Sure, and I, I thank you for, for making that clear and for letting me make that extra clear for myself. I agree with Dr. Johnson. My, my sixth grader was accessing three different sites and platforms this spring, and uh, that much more than the actual work that he was having to do with the feeling of missing his friends was the real, was the real drain. So, I, I have a personal religion. And hearing that we're going to be tightening that up is, uh, is reassuring.
And just to help us understand also too, the reason for that, a very quick response, is we um, just trained staff for the first time back in November last year, and they didn't, and our staff didn't really have um, predictable access to devices, which they will now have through your decision a couple of weeks ago. So, it's a very di- different um, landscape going into this fall than we had back in the spring.
Sure, and I, I don't want to suggest that somehow our, our teachers are at fault for anything like that. There is certainly something to be said for teachers being able to use the, the technology that they can best deliver from. I just know that there's, that also balances with the strain of having to learn and access multiple different platforms.
Absolutely.
Before I launch into my next question, I do want to make space. I, I may have missed it, I tried to look at the screen and see, I, thank you. Commissioner, is there, I was just going to open up space for those that haven't had a question yet.
It was a fast turn on and turn off, so I'm, I'm happy to uh, have my shot. Um, so, first of all, um, I just want to say, I, as an educator who is doing this own planning for my own classroom, and it's, it's, you know, one classroom, I can tell you that I, I cannot imagine um, the amount of planning and the amount of thoughtfulness and the constant changing landscape. You know, we're hearing it from the county level, these, that, you know, the uptick in cases, the six red, you know, flags on our, on our report. So, um, I want to thank everyone um, on the task force uh, and in the executive office who have been working so hard um, to make this plan. Um, and I want to say as uh, the newest member of the school board, for this to be one of the first decisions um, that we get to make, uh, it's a, it's a big one. And the thing that I am hung up on, the, the linchpin for me is, is the trade-off in safety. So, on one side of the coin, we have the safety of our students. And that involves their education safety. That involves them being able to access education, to be able to access instruction. And also, when we ask them to be home, what are we asking them to be at home with? What circumstances are we asking them to be there uh, in? And are they safe? Do, do they have food? Do they have a, a safe space to learn? Do they have help? Um, will there even be anyone in their house with them? You know, are our students safe? Um, and on the other side of that coin, if we flip it and say, okay, well, that, we need to prioritize that, they have to go to school, on that other side of the coin is the safety of the staff in our building. And how, how can we ask them to come back to work? And at the same time, tell them that we cannot guarantee that they will not contract a potentially deadly illness? It is a huge trade-off, and it's not an easy one to make. So, any decision that we make uh, on this subject has a really unfortunate um, flip side of the coin. And when I have been talking with folks out in the community, I've really been looking at this blended model as um, a, a potential. Um, and Jim, it's funny that you said as a foundation and as a blueprint, because I've referred to it many times as that. As it was my hope, is that it was, it was a, it was the foundational drawing for a, a, a much grander plan. So, I'm very glad to hear that. Um, but that we understand that there's a lot of concerns and a lot of trade-offs that we have yet to answer. And so, I really want to start, I want to start with the staff um, piece of it. I, I have pages of questions, but I'm going to start with the staffing um, part of it. Um, and I'm, I'm going to start uh, primarily with the idea that if we ask staff to come back into our buildings, and, and so, I'm really grateful that the, that the, the um, union folks, that the Oakley Association of Educators spoke so much at, in public comment, and we've been hearing so much from them uh, with the survey results. Because I think that this is a key, this is really key. How do our staff feel? Do they want to come back to their classrooms? And under what circumstances do they feel that they could be safe? How many of our teachers have pre-existing conditions that will make it more dangerous than others to come back to our buildings? Um, how, what kind of options can we give our staff to maybe partake in the virtual learning if they do have a pre-existing condition or some sort of, of situation that makes it really impossible for them to be in a classroom with students, but they really want to still be there? Um, and the second piece of that, so there's obviously the safety piece of it. And I have a, I'm, I'm feeling very strongly that at least at the secondary level where we know students have a much greater chance, that age group of kids um, of, of spreading COVID nineteen, that masks feel to me like a, a part of the culture that I would feel very comfortable asking our students to adopt um, all the time. And uh, the second piece, so there's the health and safety aspect of our staff and what type of options we're giving them. Um, and, and then there's the instructional part of it. And my primary concern with the instructional part of it is the first and second grade variance. We heard a lot from staff who are feeling very, very nervous about the first and second grade variance and about their increased exposure. And I, I, I've just heard now, and I was very grateful to hear that maybe we're adding staff and we're spreading those kids out. Where are we putting them and who are they going to be with? Because if they're going to be with somebody that we hire who doesn't have a teaching certificate, because we can't find teachers right now, um, you know, what, what does that look like? And additionally, this, this virtual teaching, so what I'm hearing with the virtual days, so when Group A is at home and they are doing virtual learning, that the teachers who are teaching in the classroom, so this is down to the classroom level now, we are asking that teacher to be responsible for their kids in their classroom and then do a check-in once, maybe twice a day with the students in their classrooms. Um, I think that's what I understood. Um, so really, those, those kids at home are not getting a lot of um, virtual instruction. They're getting a check-in with maybe some things that have been sent home with work to do. Um, and just that, how are we planning to support teachers in having to teach both virtually and in-person? And that is the, some of my staffing questions for now.
So, um, I, this is Kim. Um, and I think if I could summarize it, and we're just uh, thinking about how to divide up the answers. Um, I, I heard options for staff, especially those who may have pre-existing conditions or vulnerabilities. I think Kay, if, if you could answer that. And then Jim, I heard um, the balance between face-to-face and virtual for staff as well as the first and second grade model from a staff perspective. So, after Kay um, answers the vulnerable staff question, if you could answer those, that would be super.
Thanks, Kim. So, Erica, the question related to how the district will address staff who have um, you know, pre-existing health conditions. Um, we started that last week with a communication that went out to all staff that shared with them the different options that are available to them, either with um, a leave of absence through F and LA or um, an accommodation plan through the ADA. And so, provided them uh, specific information related to go, how, how to go about, um, either requesting more information, asking questions, getting clarification, um, and then specific steps about if this really applies to you, you know, here are the steps that you take to, to make this happen. Um, that went out uh, just over a week ago. And um, obviously, we've had people reaching out, asking, you know, like I said, those questions, looking for clarification. Um, and so, once we have that information, we'll work with those individual employees to make sure that we're um, not putting them in harm's way. A lot of that information has to do with confidential medical information that they share with the district um, from their health provider. Um, and then we develop a plan, if they're able to work in any capacity, um, we develop a plan for an accommodation for them. Um, and if they're not able to work um, in any capacity, then obviously, they, we look to um, grant them a leave of absence um, until they are to a point from the medical provider that they're able to work. Does that help to clarify?
Yeah, I guess, yes, it does, thank you very much. So, I guess what I'm looking for, I did receive that document, but I'm really looking for, so I, I think it's those accommodations. And I think my concern here, my big concern is that we're going to lose our staff. Is that there's going to be folks who are going to choose, and right now, we need all of them and then some. So, I think um, we have incredibly dedicated, I mean, if that's the one thing, that's, that's the one thing we, we have in spades right now, is we have incredibly dedicated teachers who want to do the best for their kids. Um, and so, I think many teachers want to stay, they want to be here, they want to be part of this. Um, and so, what I would really urge, what I would really like to see is those accommodations um, potentially even be building to building. Is, you know, maybe the principals are involved in making those decisions of what does the staff in my building look like and how can I get creative? Let's, let's say, if there is a music teacher who is in an, an at-risk category and is willing to teach, but maybe she needs to zoom into the class of the first and second graders in the classroom to teach, how much flexibility can we give our buildings? Can we give our staffing situation so that we keep many teachers as we can? We, that they're, they're as comfortable and as accommodated as we can so that we keep them? Because we are running a risk of not only losing them to illness and then not having subs to come in, but just losing them because they don't want to take this risk. And they want to take a year off, and they want to, you know, not take this on. And so, I, I really want to encourage our district to do everything that they can to be flexible and creative and give these folks a way to be a part of this plan in any way that they can be.
Your comments about involving the building, that happens with every ADA accommodation that we have. That's the first step in the process, is working with the immediate supervisor to see how that accommodation can work for both the employee and the district. Um, so that will happen in each one of those situations.
Thanks.
Sure.
I believe the second part you want to know was about um, how to support face-to-face and virtual in the same day. Um, and I think I mentioned uh, earlier that um, that will not be expected to happen simultaneously. So, during a portion of the day would be that check-in for, with um, students when they are not, um, when they are not working face-to-face with, with their students. They would check in with their, they would do their virtual contact time. So, that's going to require some design, right? So, there's a couple of different layers to that. One is actual training. So, I'm, pull up in front of my, you can't see this, but I'm pulling up in front of me, some different, um, so we've been working with consultants that specialize in this area. Um, and they have trainings, and I'm looking at one, you know, they, they have sessions about creating class communities, safe and positive culture, um, working on assessment strategies, um, working with families. They, they have a whole session on family partnerships and how to really leverage family partnerships in, in a flexible learning environment. Um, designing engaging tasks, um, synchronous learning, a separate one on asynchronous learning, which really, which you were talking about, creating things that students, or the students access um, at their own time as opposed to the time when um, when they're on with the teacher. Um, uh, how to support social, emotional learning and building a meaningful relationships, um, how to guarantee you have equity and access for all students. And then how do you have students collaborate with one another in remote learning? So, those are just some of the things that we are going to provide for our staff in terms of training. Um, we also are going to provide follow-up sessions that allow them to dig even deeper into those topics. But one of the pieces that we did so is that, um, and, and when we began to sketch out what days could look like, um, that Wednesday day has in, built in, um, we actually um, tried to provide an hour each day for, on our draft plan of um, working or having that virtual contact time. We would like to see that double on Wednesday because we know that we have both sets of students that wouldn't be in our buildings on Wednesday. Um, but we also built into it collaboration time throughout the, each Wed- each Wednesday. A couple of hours each time for professional development and a couple of hours um, on those Wednesdays for, for collaboration. And the collaboration, the message that we did um, back in the spring was, you can't go this, you can't do it alone if you're a teacher. You really need to work on this with your colleagues. So, if you're trying to create engaging asynchronous learning opportunities for your student and you want to go it alone, that's a recipe for disaster. You really do need to work with your colleagues to do that because it's going to take all hands on deck to create meaningful, engaging activities. So, if I'm teaching biology, or if I'm teaching Math Seven, or if I'm teaching English Six, we really want to have our, our staff do that as a team so they can really take, and really leverage the best talents that each of them can bring to the table to provide engaging learning activities. So, think of it as, like I said, as, as if you're an instructor and you're looking at five days and you think of the different activities, what are the things that we can do? So, for example, if I want to explain something, I, maybe I'm going to create that as a video. Um, that's going to be something that students would not do during my two days that, that they would do then, they would grab asynchronous. Um, so are there, are there certain, uh, maybe they do some independent writing. So, we're going to try to create that time. Um, possibly, we might have some in-class time, but we also want to create some out-of-class time for those things to happen. So, we're really looking at how we support um, and use our time throughout the day. So, really looking at it, not in terms of, hey, there's two days of school and then there's three days not of school, but there's five days of school and let's look at the different activities that we have. And how can we decide which ones are most critical to be done in person? And which ones can students um, engage in at their own time? And then still having those check-ins with your students. And also those assessment strategies to know, to be able to monitor. So, if students are not um, engaging those activities, we have a loop that helps them to uh, communicate to the family about where they, um, what supports that we could put in place to help students be more successful. You mentioned earlier, we can't guarantee everything at home. I mean, that's going to, that's, that is really a challenge no matter what, whether it's the hundred percent um, virtual or the blended model. But we can try to do as much as we can control to create the conditions to, to try to increase the probability of student success in that area.
And can you speak, sorry, this is the last question on this topic. Can you, can you speak to how much flexibility and how, 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 how universal this is going to be building to building um, and within the grade levels? And how much flexibility, you know, so if there's a great idea, if there's a really wonderful idea that rises up at long, that is like, hey, that really worked. Um, how much flexibility are we going to allow? And how much universal uh, nature to it?
So, that's why you do, the essential learning outcomes are really the what we want students to accomplish. And those assessments are really, and what's most critical to us are having some common assessments to help us see whether or not our students get there, but then providing teachers the flexibility and how to get there. At the same time, uh, in a world of Canvas, we have what's called Creative Commons, where we can, teachers can easily share with one another the strategies they're using to try to support their students. Um, the other reason for um, creating um, collaborative cultures as well is you look at the, how the performance of students are for each teacher. So, teachers can bring to the table and be able to share with one another what's working. And so, they can share like what, it, um, it's saying like, if so, one teacher comes to the table saying, all my students are getting their things in, another student, teacher says, I'm struggling, and they have the opportunity to discuss with one another in a non-threatening, non-judgmental way, what it is that works for one that, that we can learn from and possibly the other person can use. Really, that Creative Commons area um, is a place where teachers can share with one another within, it's a safe place uh, within that um, online, uh, the learning management system so that they can um, utilize the tools across town. I mean, we have found that what we're doing right now um, is one of those things that we expect to continue, whether we are in the non-COVID world or not, the ability for us to quickly connect with one another and share like we've never been able to before.
So, Jim, I'm a big fan of making the subtext text tonight. As you may have noticed, uh, one of our public commenters and several of the messages we received uh, over the past several days uh, asked about the individual teacher's workload in terms of their lesson planning. It sounds to me like the plan is essentially that, that a teacher individually, and obviously, you're talking about working collaboratively together. And I don't want to minimize the difficulty of planning in two different modes, but the expectation is really going to be that they're going to plan one five-day week for their class, or, or in, at the high school, if you're teaching multiple preps for each prep. And it will be just delivered sort of flip-flop. So, we won't be asking our teachers to effectively plan a full week of virtual learning and a full week of four-day of, of in-person. Okay, I just wanted to get that answer out there. And again, subtext text, I think is helping the communication.
You have, you have five days of learning for your students and two of which would be in-person.
Correct, okay, thank you, that's, that's very clear. I do see Commissioner Harder is ready with another question, but I want to make sure that Commissioner Clements or Dr. Bika would not like to jump in here and have an opportunity before we kind of go back to others. Commissioner Clements?
Yeah, I was going to suggest um, that, that Lori jumping in if she's ready. I had a bunch of questions prepared. And um, now that it's getting to my turn figuring out which have, have been answered well and which I still have questions about.
Um, I, I'd like to ask a question about where and how uh, children will spend time when outside of school. And I want to acknowledge that school districts cannot solve these problems alone. We need the entire community to come together to meet the needs of all children. Um, we've talked a bit about childcare, and I understand um, Ms. Kohler's explanation for pre-K through second grade. Um, I think many families with third graders through fifth graders um, feel that those children also need childcare. And I think we know that even when um, adolescents are unsupervised, it's when they engage in the behavior that puts them most at risk. So, some of the messages that we got, many messages uh, express concerns for working families. At least one message talked about, and I, I'd like to hear more- At least one message talked about, and I'd like to hear more if we have communicated, are planning any kind of collaboration with partner providers? So, and thinking about, not only do children have childcare, but also could there be cohort models with partner providers? And I want to add to this, Ms. Marx, when talking about finding additional spaces, not only thinking about just basic childcare, but finding spaces where additional staff could be added that would have supplemental academics. So kind of blending basic care also with academic advancement.
So I can speak a little bit of, to some of the conversations that we've had around, certainly the, the parents concerned. So 23%, I believe it was, of parents expressed concern about childcare. And certainly in the focus groups, that was another question that came up. So as I indicated earlier, intentionally along with the curricular aspects of first grade, childcare was one of the reasons that we looked at first and second grade being face-to-face at school as often as they are. You know, if we had additional space, certainly we would be happy to expand it. It really is a six-foot distance challenge and the amount of square footage that we have that presents a challenge with that. Another question that we have heard quite a bit from families or community members is if I have older children, will one child go to school on Monday and Tuesday and another child go to school on Thursday and Friday? And we are committed to sending a household to school together. So as an example, if my older child is going to be Monday and Tuesday, then my younger child should also be Monday and Tuesday. So that is something that we're looking to do in order to help with some of the supervision that some families have planned. You know, certainly my youngest is out of daycare range, but certainly needs supervision. So that will be a plan that I'll rely on in my, in my own house. As far as partnering with childcare facilities, we have received phone calls from childcare providers with questions and we've begun that conversation, but we have not certainly finished that conversation and don't have solid plans in place yet. I think part of that is just really looking for what will the model be? And once we kind of know the sandbox that we're playing and then we can work towards solutions, but those conversations have been started with some of our providers.
And Kim, I'd like to say, so it is an example of one of those is we had, we're working to partner with the Boys and Girls Club. They do have limited space, again due to social distancing, so they have seven classrooms that they can put eight students in each classroom. And we've looked at the United Way Grant opportunity to be able to support their staffing of students when they're not with us, to be able to put them again in a safe place to support them both academically and their own safety. I know as, as Kim mentioned, there's also others and I know that Superintendent Johnson is like, for example, I know he has a conversation with the YMCA coming up and others. So this is a series of conversations, as I'm sure you know, like to be able to put together a support system, but those are just a few examples.
Thanks, Commissioner Clements. You want to jump in here and then we'll go to Commissioner Harder and then I will take a question and then I'm watching everyone else for when you want to get back in.
Sure. So thanks Lori about the childcare question. That's one of those outstanding that I, that I also had. Related question, we've, we've touched on the virtual learning model in a number of different ways. But one thing that I'm intensely concerned about and many people also share concerns about is how we can address the inequities that result from accessing both the virtual learning platforms as well as just the whole suite of other services that the school district provides for students to try to meet their other social and emotional needs. And I'm looking to learn more about what we can do or what has already been in place to, to really focus on that. And I think there were, there are a lot of things that were done, you know, post-shutdown in March and admirably over the summer thus far. But, you know, I think that, you know, that's a huge gap and we're talking about trying to address both educational equity as well as just trying to eliminate, you know, that those generational cycles of, of inequity in our system. So, so what can we do both from directing the virtual learning, making sure it's accessible and students are not just treading water for that period of time? But, but what else can we do to make sure that students and their, their family units for, you know, for the degree that we can, are accessing those other services that they're either existing within our school system and, you know, including but not limited to their lunch and other food options, but are getting connected to those other counseling and other services that they are largely depending on school districts to access?
I'll speak to that. I'm just making a note so I don't miss any of it. I think the first part was about access, I mean, simply to like digital access, right? And then I think you started to ask about social, emotional and mental health support. So we'll, I'll start with the digital piece and then I'll move into that. And if I miss anything in the, in there, just ask me at the end what I didn't fill for your question. So on the, on the device end, of course, the decision a couple of weeks ago, we'll provide a device for every student when they are in a remote learning environment. That provides, and by having it be our device, it comes with it, one of our concerns with bringing your own device, if you recall, was access to a suite of programs and services built within our, that ecosystem. So we do know there's going to be a gap at the start of the year for some students to get those devices. So one of the things that we'd like to do after, we have clarity from the board on that framework is really reach out to families in the interim about their, if they, if the support that they would need in terms of a device until we have one for every student. The second thing that we're going to ask them as well is their need for internet service as well. We asked again last year, but we're going to ask again. We've also been working with the Department of Public Instruction who has been working very closely with the internet service providers in the state, so Charter Spectrum, Verizon and others. And really trying to work out at the household level and determining which households do not have internet service that, that may have the ability for internet service, like they could be wired up, but they do not currently have internet service. And working on a low-cost, high-speed model that the district could support. Our foundation helps support that quite a bit. But really working almost, if you would think of it as building by building in terms of where our families live to try to ensure that they have the service that they need. We also know that someone that lives in a remote, like out in Seymour, may struggle both, they may not have charter service there and they may also struggle with a, with a, like a Wi-Fi or portable hotspot. So even with hotspots, even with trying to work with Charter Spectrum and others, we still recognize that there are still challenges, especially in the rural areas, to ensure that everyone has access, even if they want access, even if they can afford that access. So we have a variety of challenges, just trying to ensure that we can at least bring with the barriers of devices and internet access, but we do have a plan in place to at least continue to collect good information, then try to budget and create funding sources to support students to have those, to have those services. But again, having them in a, in one of, a district device as opposed to their own is a big step in the right direction. Also looking at the services that we provide. So for example, our curricular resources and as often as possible, trying to work through solutions where students can have a download of material so that they can, if they do not have internet access, they at least have the information resident on their computer that they'd be able to use without a internet access. So we're continuing to work through a variety of solutions like that, try to remove those logistical barriers. You also talked about, I heard you talk at the end towards mental health. Our team has been working on, working with our providers for school-based mental health because our school-based mental health model is where we have, it's a third-party billing system where providers like Pervaya, Bullard Hospital, Mosaic and others come into our buildings and during the school day, provide mental health services to students that have, have demonstrated that need. And we've, we've been able to coordinate the, and we really serve as a coordination site for those students on our, in our physical plant. We are working with those same providers to try to push them towards fellow therapy when students are not in the buildings. Not every one of those providers currently supports that, but we're continuing to work on that model as well so that we can provide students that supports whether they are in a virtual setting or in a in-person setting.
So as a follow-up question, is there means, because I, what I understood is that there was, there was a percentage of students who just didn't engage it much at all the several weeks that we were closed down. And I, and then there's other, there are other needs likely associated. Do we have the, the resources or the potential to create it where, you know, teachers are not having to chase down each student one-to-one, but there may be other assistance provided to, to make sure that there's continuity? Because we will have some, you know, we will have a large number of the, of the, if this plan goes forward as proposed, who are cycling through the school. So in theory, there's some continuity with the teachers face-to-face, but there will also be those who are a hundred percent virtual, you know, may need someone who's looking after them more, you know, intentionally. Has that process been contemplated?
So you, you actually brought up exactly the two different scenarios, at-home scenarios that, that we've considered as well. And one is the blended where at least if a student falls off the radar, if you will, during the part of the week that they're away, we hope to see them at least for two days and try to re-engage that student and connect with the family. The second is the hundred percent virtual. And yes, we did have students that we didn't hear from for a long period of time. And we have, and so what we did in that case last spring, we have a huge database of all the calls that were made to try to re-engage with those families. And we were, we, part of the challenge is everything was done via phone. We want to continue to work with city-county health on a protocol if we want to try to be more physically present, to try to engage if we have students that we don't hear from. But that would be something, again, that's a, that's a, that's a dynamic that we would have to work through with city-county health about what would be appropriate and safe in terms of creating a connection with students that with their families do not engage and if they choose virtual and we don't hear from them. Our staff really worked hard and, and we can show you some samples of, of the data collected in terms of the phone calls, emails, et cetera. They did, they did great work in trying to make sure they connected and, and I think someone mentioned earlier, working all hours to try to do that. And it was a real challenge. And I think that was probably the thing that were on our staff the most is when they went through those efforts and still didn't make those connections. So if we do, there are other strategies that we think we can engage in, but again, we will work with city-county health on any solution to make sure that it's done in a safe manner.
Because I think my two primary concerns in preparing for this meeting and the whole constellation of challenges here is, you know, top is the physical and mental health of the students. And then the, kind of one B is the equity concerns that are particularly raised or elevated to the, to the virtual. And things were not good before, you know, we had a lot, plenty of equity problems, you know, a year ago, but you know, it's like I'm supercharged right now because of what's going on. And so I'm hoping that this intense scrutiny of, of how education is being, at least temporarily reinvented, can make sure that we're, we're being very intentional about how those challenges get worked out. And I, and I understand that's going to be a work in progress as we figure out what's working and what's not.
Exactly.
Superintendent Johnson, you're unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I've heard, you know, not just our, our public speakers, but it's, it's come up about masks and Commissioner Zer had, had brought it up a little while ago too about face coverings, masks. And while we're providing them or the state is providing them for students, we're providing them for staff, from staff or for staff as well. You know, there are a couple of questions, should, should a district policy mandate a face covering? And the department, Wisconsin Department of Health Services has recommended no. However, if we're considering that type of a mandate, it's imperative that, that we districts consider the feasibility and the implementation and the enforcement of the policy. And if you go back to when Manny Van Vliet was presenting in her area, she, she speaks directly with principals as well as policy. And that's, that's somewhere where we can address this as well. You know, and there, there needs to be some questions that we ask and we're more than willing to do so. We've got plenty of time to do it. What would the policy or expectations be for staff? What would it be for students? How, how would we change them? Could we change them more often? What would exceptions look like? So there are a whole host of those types of questions that we have to address. And we've been discussing those with our countywide superintendents as well. There's a lot of consistency there, but I just wanted to, to bring that up. For example, tomorrow we'll have a follow-up meeting regardless of what occurs tonight, 12 o'clock with all of our system leaders. It's all of our administrators, executive team members, directors, and people like Mark Goings, who's not administrator, but he's a very key component in this overall process as well as Jim Phi. But probably about 40 people just to talk about what occurred at the meeting tonight, what things we really need to focus on. And then Ms. Van Vliet, she will be having her operations meeting on Wednesday with her operations group where they're going to be speaking to principals. And that would be a component where they talk about policy. So ultimately it's up to principals and assistant principals, principals to enforce policy. And, you know, we really need to hear from them on this matter as well. And definitely they're hearing from their staff. So I just wanted to articulate those points when it, when it comes to masks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Commissioner Harder?
Thank you. I have two questions. I'll try to keep them brief. One is, I'm watching this, it seems to me the gating criteria for implementation of health orders around the country has been largely based on case count trajectory. So in other words, if we're on an upward curve for a certain amount of time or on a downward curve for a certain amount of time, usually 14 days is a figure I've seen, that, that will trigger these orders coming into effect, in and out of effect. Given that Eau Claire County and the state of Wisconsin are both on an upward trajectory right now, are, it just makes me wonder, what are the circumstances? I know that we have the safer-at-home order coming from Madison as, as kind of that, that option where we do a full shutdown, fully virtual. But are there any other circumstances beyond waiting for Madison to get their act together that we would say that we as a district would look at going fully virtual and, and that trajectory? I don't know if that came up yet as, as part of this discussion.
So I can answer parts or portions of that. I'm wondering if Lisca is still on?
Yeah, I'm still here, Kim. I can certainly answer as well.
Thank you. So one of the questions that I had around that was safer at home in the Respond Together Eau Claire, do you want to address that?
Sure. In our Respond Together Eau Claire plan, we wrote that as we were exiting the state plan, which was the safer-at-home plan. And we documented in that plan the trajectory through from that point in middle of May. We aren't likely going to have any state plan moving forward. And our plan in Eau Claire as we move up and down that plan based on disease spread is really to watch the data. Our, if you look at the measures that we have in that plan, they are very much focused on making sure that we have disease spread, as you said, staying not in alarming levels, but also public health capacity and healthcare capacity staying in places that are going to work so that we can control spread as much as possible. Our biggest concern and the last measures to change will, will be our healthcare measures. And if they turn red, we're and if they turn red, we're in trouble. And certainly, well before that, we would be recommending looking at people being in a situation where they would not be out and about like they would be where we're at now. There will be potentially situations where individual school buildings or classrooms will not be in session, and so just so that the school board understands that as well, that there are circumstances where, because of disease spread within a school, we would be working with that school and that principal in the district because it's possible that there may not be enough faculty or staff to actually have school, but also where we just have to stop the spread of disease. And that has happened rarely for other diseases, but it's certainly something that could happen with COVID-19.
And that actually, Lisca, is exactly what I was going to say, is, is one of the things that we know we're going to need through this entire process is flexibility and to be able to be responsive. So certainly, because this is, you know, a situation we haven't experienced before in our lifetime, there will be things that we didn't anticipate or we were not able to predict, and what we will need to be able to do in those situations is to be able to respond appropriately, but that'll take some flexibility on our part.
Thank you. And then just briefly then, my second question, which I think you may have actually already answered, but we know that substitute teachers were hard to come by before the pandemic hit, and I'm sure it will only get harder in this post-pandemic world, but in this new world, teachers can't safely just tough it out if they have sore throat symptoms. They can't, we can't have another teacher take on half a class if we can't get a sub. Got a lot of challenges there in terms of staffing, but it sounds to me like we, we always have the out of shutting down. It's rather extreme, but that if, worst case is, we can go to that full virtual for that group that's affected by that. Am I right in assuming that's, that's the fallback answer? And if not, what is?
So we are prepared to be, to move to any, either any of the models at any time from an instructional standpoint. So, and we would respond, of course, to anything from city-county health. So if we ever got to a situation where you had to shut anything down, you always have that option of moving to a virtual model. And then again, if we also have a cohort of teachers and students that are already in that model, we'd be able to support that transition as well. It's going to be a transition like we've never done before, but it's something that is on our mind, that we need to be that flexible. And again, that goes back to the instructional model where you continue to focus on equity, essential learning, assessments, instructional strategies and communication. So keeping, going back to that, and then, and then if we have to get put in that situation, we can at least shift to that, whether for small cohorts or whether for, as a whole district.
I'll say one last thing. What I'm hearing is a, a pattern of response here, which is about, we need the framework to work out the details, we need the framework approved in order to work out these details, and we need to have some trust that between working with the community and working with the staff, that we will work through those details in a way that's as satisfactory as we can make it to everybody, but given that we know that there are compromises everywhere.
Yeah, we, we have relied heavily on our staff to get this far. They've raised tons of questions that we just can't answer because we don't have a, a framework approved yet. But yeah, to fill in the details of it, it's going to require their input. Thank you.
It's, it's my opinion that one of the most important experiences about school and about that experience is extracurricular, including athletics and performing arts. I think that Jim had said that the WIA recommendation was going to be out very soon, and I was wondering if there's any idea on a timeline. And then on a, the second question is, then are, do you think that that might create a, a situation where all extracurricular activities are kind of lumped together, treated uniformly? Or do you think we might be looking at some of these extracurriculars if, if we're in person individually?
Yeah. Just going to make sure I mute off. I, I'd hate to project when the WI is going to actually make any announcement. I know that they have meetings, they had meetings last week, they have more this week, so I'm not sure when their announcements, announcements will be made. I do know the first day of handing out football equipment is scheduled for August 3rd, so we do have that timeline looming upon us, so we are waiting for some guidance from the WIA. So it's difficult to answer the second question that you asked, because if we could, the ability to make individual determinations based on the activity really would depend what sort of umbrella that they make overall. And so based on that, what they decide to do, then we look at whatever else is left. So they, clearly we have some activities that are not WIA, like forensics. One of our challenges in after-school activities is, is how do you, the cohorts, right? So that's a, a big challenge for us, because if you have students in core groups and then you mix to new groups in the afternoon for after-school, that becomes a different challenge. We've already talked with our city-county health colleagues about that and the challenge with that, so we're going to have to work through that. But the starting point really is going to depend on what WI says first, and then we just, that will give us at least the scope of what else we have to, within our discretion to make decisions on.
Yeah, so my, my, my next set of questions kind of align on, I guess, if I look at these slides, the facility piece and then the health and safety piece. Could you speak to, one of the things that we also know is the importance as, as we're dealing with this pandemic of indoor air quality? So from a facility standpoint, can you, can you, is there an update in terms of, are we gone and replaced all the air filters? Have all the vents been updated, replaced, cleaned? Where are we in terms of being able to logistically look at how, how air is traveling in and out? And so that's the first question. And the second question i, is one that's a little bit, and you know, we've gone back and forth with just the mask piece, but I guess overall, if we, if we're really trying to comfort, especially provide some level of, address some of the levels of concerns of our staff, the procurement of PPEs and other types, it, it, it's very difficult right now. So I'm, I'm just wondering where, where, where is the school district with the assistance of the state in that procurement of, at the simplicity of even masks or other PPEs, given the fact that some of our teachers may require, will want to teach influencer? So the difficulty of securing those PPE items, and then if you can address kind of where, because the, the problem is, some of our facilities are pretty dated, so in terms of indoor air quality has not created equal in some of these, in some of these facilities. So if you could address both of those, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. And so what I will do is, I will, I will talk a little bit about what we have already as far as PPE, and then I'll pass it off to Abby, who is working with the purchasing for what we're seeking for PPE. And then Daryl Peterson, Marissa, if you could unmute Daryl Peterson, he is our Director of Buildings and Grounds, and will be able to answer the HVAC question. So first of all, as far as which PPE we do have, we, we have some personal protective equipment that we use annually, all the time for, for some of our students. So if, if we look at things like, do we have gloves? We have gloves. We have received 23,000 masks from the state of Wisconsin. We have received thermometers for, for our buildings from the state of Wisconsin. We know that we will probably need more than that, so Abby is working with the purchasing department to secure more of that. We've had conversations around some of our special populations that we might need more personal protective equipment, i, if we look at some of the, the situations that staff are in. And so those are definitely conversations that we've had, and our health and safety team is working on a list of what we would procure. Abby, do you want to talk about what Scott is working on from a purchasing standpoint? And then if you'd pass it off to Daryl for HVAC?
Sure. Thanks, Kim. So Scott is our purchasing manager, and he's developed a form that's been shared with all of our division leads to assist with the types of PPE or other purchases that will need to be made. And so the form was shared several weeks ago, kind of as a precursor to figure out what were the types of things that we would need? Is there a certain brand? And then he can work with many of our, either counterparts through a state contract or get items out to bid, so that way we can assure that we've got them here when school starts. So some of the things that we're finalizing actually in the next day or so would be masks for staff, we need additional masks for students, thermometers, and other things that are coming up. Those are the things that are probably the hottest topics, I guess you could say right now, and the things that we're looking to kind of finalize and make sure that we get those on hand. We're starting to get other questions about things that would be needed as well in the forms of PPE, but I think the priorities right now are really on the mask for staff and the thermometers. And as Kim said, we did get masks for students and thermometers, and I think those arrived late last week. And so we have some on hand, but we know it's not enough probably to take care of our needs for an extended period of time. And so finalizing that and working with Scott just to ensure that we followed our procurement process, but also just tools, because I will tell you that we are getting lots and lots of emails every single day from vendors that are ready and willing to help us, and so trying to figure out what is the desired product, and then we can reach back out to those vendors and make sure that A, they can get us what we need and get it in time for when we need it, for when school returns. I'm sure there will be other things that have come out, but that was kind of the process that the purchasing team developed in order to kind of get the ball rolling and streamline it to make it easy for the people requesting the items to know this is exactly what we're looking for. And if they aren't able to articulate a vendor or show a sample, then Scott works on the back end with that requestor to figure out, is this the type of product that they're looking for? And then once they, they yups it is, then we kind of move on to that next stage, next stage of the purchasing process. I think that covers all of the PPE, and so Daryl, are you available to answer the other questions?
Marissa did indicate she was working on getting him unmuted, so.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. Thanks, Daryl.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Regarding the question about the HVAC, we are, we are monitoring our regular scheduling for taking care of all the equipment. My HVAC techs are constantly working with the leads at the elementary schools as well as the maintenance folks at the secondary schools. And we are, we have a regularly scheduled filter-changing timeframe, and we will continue following those and monitoring as we have been to ensure that we have, you know, as much clean air as we can get through there as possible with the equipment. They're also monitoring, you know, positions of the outside air dampers on all of the equipment to make sure that we have everything operating where it should be, and to do our best to ensure that as much fresh air as we can bring in, meeting codes and things like that, is, is being delivered to all the spaces. So it's a continual monitoring thing, and definitely we, we follow a, a schedule that continues on through the year, whether the kids have been there or not. So we are, are, are monitoring those things and keeping those things on the radar for, so that they don't get dropped and missed, so. Other questions I can answer about that?
Thank you, Daryl. We appreciate the, the information. I do have Commissioner Zer, you're going to be up next. I just want to mention that as it, as we go on, I am committed to making sure that we ask and hear answers to whatever questions are on our mind and whatever we need, but we do have a task tonight, which is to make some sort of a decision, whether that is to approve, reject, or table this, this discussion. So I want my colleagues to keep that in mind, that at some point we are looking for a motion one way or the other, since that is our goal here. But again, I, we need to be able to make sure that we have the questions that are important to us before making this decision, so. Commissioner Zer?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One question that was actually generated by a parent. So the document that was shared out listed that basically special education students would sort of have their plan dictated by individualized plans. And I, I'm just wondering if you guys can speak more to the process by which that will happen? I think there's a lot of concern with our, with, with those families about how that's going to look and what that's going to mean for their kids, and they're getting not as much certainty tonight, because we're asking more general ed questions here. And then on top of that, from an equity standpoint, what, how are we going to provide virtual learning to our ELL students? And how are we going to support the families of those students as they try to navigate systems that are going to be potentially difficult and not translated for them, such as Canvas and the elementary platforms? And then the second part of that question, so there's the equity questions that I have there, the second part of the question is just the process by which families are going to choose what they're doing. So we have, we have this virtual-only option, we've got the blended option that we're giving folks. And so the, the best thing that could happen is that families who, who want to stay home and who feel like they could do an absolutely fantastic job of providing at-home education, they would be willing to do that, or might even just want to do that. And I, I would challenge that 6% number or 9%, I can't remember the exact figure you gave, on the virtual-only, because I think the health situation in our country and our county and our state is changing rapidly, and I think parents are going to feel additional stress about, some, some parents, and I, I do think it's going to be a small percentage, are going to feel additional stress about sending their kids into school. So at what point do parents say, I want the virtual-only option for my children? So now you're planning that whole, you're mapping out the, the, those classrooms for minus those three kids or those two kids, and then a week later, they decide, nah, I'd actually want to come back. That's going to create a hiccup in those cohorts, so are you going to do it on a quarterly basis? Are those, are there going to be a timeframe to those opt-in, opt-outs on that? And how are we going to communicate those things with families? And how are we going to ask for some commitment, and in what timeframe will that be?
So let's work backwards, and I'll start with the surveying and asking the question about what people want to do, and then I'll talk about EL, and then Mandy Van Vliet will talk with you about special education. So is that okay if we go in reverse direction? So our intent is to reach out to families and ask them what their intention is. But once they make that choice, the ability to come back, they can if there's space, right? So we are going to design a structure based on the number of people that make the, the choice. So one of our challenges right now, as we look at classes, is, so one of the, one of the challenging numbers might be, if you're in a classroom that can only hold 11 students, and you have 26 kids, you have, if you have Group A and Group B, that adds up to 22, right? So you've got four other kids, what happens? And so some of those kids, we're, we're going to have to see, that's actually like it would be staffed right now. But what we need to do is, we need to figure out how many people are interested in that online, and then basically restaff buildings. And it'll be restaffed based on, again, that social distancing, the square footage, and the number of people who can fit into these spaces. On the ability for a family to come back into that space will depend whether or not there's, the, the structure that's created allows them back in, right? So if you say, I want to go to the virtual one, we will make them aware that the ability to come back into the physical space will depend whether or not we have, whether or not we have room based on the structure that's built. So, and then we intend to ask them that intention over the next couple of weeks. So if we're able to make a decision today, if we don't make a decision today, that will now then just move that decision down the road, and then creates a tighter timeline of trying to then staff the building based on the number of people that, well, let's just say we table it till August 3rd, right? And then we're going to have to survey after that, which pushes, which would push responses into mid to late August, and then you have to still try to staff buildings to try to make, you know, create your structure and support system for the students that are in the building and the students that are out. So it would make it an incredibly short timeline, but our intention is to reach out to families this week, based on if, if you make a decision. But our intention is to reach out to families this week based on, if you make a decision, based on what decision you make, basically about their ability for transportation, their technology needs and for their interest in either the virtual only or to be part of, if we do adopt a abundant model, that model. I mean, if you were to adopt virtual only, that obviously there's no reason to ask because then there's not a, there's not another option. But if there are two options, we need to ask them that. So that's that process we would put in place. And again, that depends on what you all do tonight. In terms of EL, and then Mandy will talk about special education after that.
I'm sorry. We're transitioning to the question about ELL. Could I ask a follow-up about that process, Jim?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what you've described, it is a concern to me as it's, it's it's far too close to changing something about general education that are the, are the kinds of things that are problematic about perhaps private education or even charter schools or charter schools within public. It's a kind of rigidity that privileged families probably will be, have very little effect. But families without privilege could be tremendously effective, affected. And I I don't know how we have a process that's that's more flexible than the one that you've described. There are going to be, certain families are really going to miss out and it's whether that they're they're mobile or, I mean, there are all kinds of reasons, but that really brings up a lot of concern for me.
Well, the challenge, I know that some districts are going like you have to commit for a semester. I think Erica, Commissioner Zer, you said like, you know, like making commitments. I think that's pretty tough to be able to do that. That's not what we're thinking would happen. But if, if people want to move back, part of it would be, we'd have to look at the volume of people that have come back, the spaces that we have available and then the people to support that, right? So it just the ability to shift and I'm thinking about Kay's world and Kim's world about being able to staff it, right? To be able to, because you have to create staffing structures to be able to support it. So what the timeline would look like if people wanted to be able to shift back between? It's just that moving from one model to another is not just as simple as like a turnkey. It depends. And we really don't know the volume of people that are interested until we actually ask them. We've always tried to be extremely accommodating. I think we also have to understand that we actually, you know, as you heard earlier, we have limited staff and so if staff are committed in one part of the organization doing virtual and then people are shifting, want to shift toward the in-person, we'd have to try to figure out how do you shift then the resources both in space and adults. It's not saying that we couldn't, but we just would have to know that it maybe couldn't, if you wanted, if you asked on Tuesday, it may not happen Wednesday. Maybe it's going to take just a little bit to figure out what that, and what that looks like. We've never had to do it before. So I, I don't want to try to predict exactly what the mechanism would look like. I just know that likely it's not going to be where we just can switch back and forth on a time. It's going to take some just like we know that if we ever went to step F, one of the things I think that's in part of the plan is even that would happen overnight because it just takes a lot to try to shift all those resources, the human resources and the physical resources. I don't disagree with you at all. It just, it's not something that is easily done if the numbers are significant. I mean, we really want to try to make, as Kim mentioned earlier, to have them still at their home school. So we really want to make students be part of that community. And so it's just, it's just going to be a challenge and it's just something we never had to set up a protocol for before. But we at least, the first step is to ask people what their intent is. Does that at least answer your question before we go on to EL or?
There's a, there's a tension here, of course, as you know, in everything we're talking about between approaching this as a group model cohort or sort of developmental universals and compared to individual differences. And especially this is back to a an earlier point by Commissioner Clemens about inequity. And so that's what's really I think about and some, we've received some messages from educators about this, you know, the idea how do you even approach asking families about their preferences, you know, and the idea that again, from an individual differences perspective, whether it's from the very beginning or it's, you know, weeks in or months in, some students really need more in-person time and some students are going to be needing less.
Commissioner Clemens.
Yeah, to follow up on Lori's comment and try to connect back to those I made earlier, you know, is it, are there ways that we can allocate resources to try to focus in on those kids who either based on our history with them, we expect them to benefit more from, from that extra service, whether it's some, some pair of educators who provide extra attention or continuity or if there's some other extra, you know, other assistance we can provide to really, because, because they're going to be harmed by this arrangement, I have no doubt. It's just a matter of how bad, I think. And what, and what do we do about it? And short of going, short of like having a whole separate track where you try to get those kids in school more than two days a week. You know, I think the next best thing we can do, because there are obviously both health and logistical concerns with doing that, is how can we have essentially, I don't know what you call it, a team or a unit who focuses on keeping those, those kids engaged to the degree we can? Because I, you know, I just fear that these, these are the same people who were hurting and falling behind when times were good. And not times are worse, you know, they're not good at all. And generally the kids who were doing well before will likely continue to do well. And, you know, it's kind of like a polarizing, a polarizing dynamic that we're experiencing. And I think we really need to focus in on, on you know, those who are likely to be harmed by this.
So one of the things that was asked earlier was also about English learners, the EL program. And part of that is we rely heavily on our bilingual education assistance to make regular contact with our families. That happened in the last closure. That was one of our work groups that was extremely busy making those connections with those that are most at risk. Likewise, those same staff right now are being queued up so that when we reach out to families about their interests, those will actually be phone calls because we want to make a direct personal contact in their home language as much as possible for families that are, where their home language is not English. So we are, that was a focus for us during the first closure. It was an area that we worked really, really hard and had a lot of success trying to support those families. And that would continue here as well. But I also want to let Mandy Van Vliet talk a little about to the special education question that was asked. So I'm not sure if Mandy is unmuted.
I am here. Yeah, so absolutely. As a district, we have an obligation and responsibility to provide special education services to all of our students that have individual education plans. And we will look to do that, to provide services and our obligation to provide FAP, pre-appropriate public education is going to be our focus. And some key things that we need to think about is providing that opportunity for FAP in light of the circumstances. And in this case, the circumstance is us as a district responding to some type of a closure and how do we go about doing that? Because we're not able to implement IEPs as we would in a typical school year. So with, if, if we are finding ourselves in a blended model and students are able to attend face-to-face, some IEPs will be able to be implemented as they are currently written during that time that students are in attendance face-to-face. If those IEPs are not able to be implemented, alternate plans will be developed by their IEP teams that might change those services that are on the IEP. So perhaps some of the services will be delivered in that face-to-face time that the student is in attendance. And perhaps the student is able to learn virtually or have some of those services provided in a virtual model as well. One thing that we learned from the spring, we learned a lot of things in providing special education services to the spring is in the spring, is some students responded very well to virtual services and some students did not. So IEP teams will be working together with families and looking at how did the spring go? What did we learn? And moving into the model that we will be delivering in the fall, how can those services be delivered in person when the students are there? Virtually, if we find ourselves needing to provide some of those services virtually, or if we were to move to 100% virtual over the course of the year, making sure that our students have systems and routines and using a device and working with staff so that those services can be continued to be provided virtually. And I think, you know, the special education staff worked very tirelessly, tirelessly to provide services the very best they could. And we will continue to work with families to provide and options for families and students that best meets the goals on, the goals and services on the students' IEPs.
Could I just, Jack, and just make sure that we, as we, your your reaching out perspectives that you tie into the existing network, either via SEPTA and or the work that Ms. Malinery does with those particular families? Because one of the things that came about from the feedback that I was getting from parents, they didn't feel like they were heavily involved, not only in getting feedback about the learning experience, but even as it relates to the survey that spoke specifically to the needs of parents and students with disabilities. So if we could ensure moving forward that those those individuals and our groups are targeted to ensure that they tangible, meaningful feedback, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yep. One of the differences will be the opportunity for IEP teams to come together and have a collaborative conversation about what those services will look like.
So I think it's safe to summarize as a board, what I'm hearing is that we're almost to a person very concerned about our, our most vulnerable students. Both of course, in the physical aspect with the epidemic, but especially the idea of academics and falling behind and we I would dare say want slash demand that we, as you work through these questions, that we really put significant focus on that equity piece and really how to drive it. And Jim, I know that you spoke to that equity was a priority in every one of our models. And I can say as a, you know, sort of new appointee to the policy and governance committee, I guess I sort of appointed myself as board president, but I have found that your staff in teaching and learning is, is ahead of me on almost all of these issues that you've been thinking about, the things that I've been thinking about in terms of equity and that you're ready to move forward. So I have great confidence that you're ready to do this. But it seems clear that we're all very concerned about those students that academically are going to be struggling and maybe don't have the same privilege as, say, my kids do, to be quite honest. They, they have, my kids have advantages that others don't. And I just, I just want to take this opportunity to hammer home that we as a board are, and I know that you are as well, so don't get me wrong, that we are dead set on those students receiving equitable treatment, not equal treatment, equitable treatment where we support them to the degree that they, they need and require. Just to, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dr. Nardine and board members, just to chime in. This has been a central piece ever since I was named superintendent back in April. When Dr. Hardbeck first introduced me to the exec team and talked about the planning that was going on, starting in May, that equity lens, I have heard that term equity lens consistently, constantly in any of the meetings that we've had. And once I joined on board July 1st, I just, I just would like to share with, with the group that, you know, whether it's the Great Lakes model for a policy review from 2014 that I'd used in my past district, that Eau Claire has used as well, as well as the University of Virginia document in 2017 that has been used in any one, every one of our processes that we discussed today as our executive team that we'll be using in the classroom, an equity checklist for back to school in this pandemic. You know, where every group, every direction, every operations group has to, has to go over this. It was really impressive. And I think that, you know, what I've heard over the last three weeks when we've been preparing for this, we do, we will keep that eye on equity, the equity lens. And I think, you know, regarding that framework and to continue that process and asking those questions and having those tough conversations and we will make this work because we need to put that first and foremost. It's not something on the plate, it's the plate. So that's how we have to, how we have to view it. Commissioner Clemens.
Thanks. So this is more of a statement than a question, but you know, we do have, you know, obviously our budget is undetermined at this point. But I think to the degree that we have resources available to us, you know, I think that we really need to, as a, as a board, give cover for staff to really think creatively about how to use all the resources we have available right now because ideally, a year from now, things will be somewhat better. So I think we need to really make sure that we're building the most robust bridge as possible with the focus on those, again, who have the least. And that goes too for, for thinking about policies and procedures. You know, maybe that are, have been tried elsewhere or maybe that haven't. But I, but I think as, as my perspective on the board is what's, you know, to give staff permission to be bold about how we go about doing these things. Because there's a, there's a lot riding on this, as you all appreciate. And to the degree that staff or that the board provides cover for making those, those calculations, I'm right there to do that.
I think one of the best ways that we can do that is to set them free is by making a decision. As Jim has mentioned a few times tonight and others, you know, we need a framework in place for them to be able to then spread their wings and say, what can we do within, within this framework rather than wondering what are we going to be allowed to do? I think there's something to be said about the coherent governance model that you know, right now, all of these decisions and questions have to go through us. And so by us like making a decision and moving forward, that can allow them, that coverage to expand. And, you know, hearing us say that, I might move to starting with that, but I do see Commissioner Lyons, I'll turn it over to you for right now.
Well, on the heels of that, President, I'd like to propose a motion that we accept the Respond Together Eau Claire proposal, steps A through E, that was submitted by the administration tonight.
Commissioner Lyons, is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harder. I don't like to dip into Robert's rules more than I need to, but I do recognize that there is a space in Robert's rules for discussion of the motion before we call the question. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Zer and then Commissioner Clemens, I see you.
So I feel like I, I really want to give us a good launch point tonight. I think it's really important that we empower the people who've been working on this for a really long time to continue to do this mountain of work that's in front of you. So there's a couple of, I don't, I don't know how we would organize this and Tim, maybe you can, sorry, Dr. Nardine, maybe you can help me with this. How we, we would communicate some expectations or some requests in that within the motion. I don't know if you have to augment it or if I can just say some of the things that I feel I would like as a caveat. So I think I kind of, to what Superintendent Johnson mentioned earlier, I want additional information and opportunity to discuss safety policies and the frequency at which we are reviewing changes to those policies specifically as it pertains to PPE for our staff and our students. And I want to reserve the right that we will hear, that we will that we will continue to do that work and could potentially change our, change our policy on that before the start of the school year. Um, obviously with input from the purchasing department and what we're able to do for our staff and our students. But I, I would like us to continue that discussion and maybe circle back to it at some point from a policy perspective. Um, I-
Can I jump in just one second there, Commissioner Zer?
Yes, please do.
I, I, again, making that subtext text, my impression from reading this, the plan from the administration was that the plan was meant to be flexible and meant to be changed and discussed as we go along. I know Ms. Giese from the Health Department talked about they're reevaluating their order every two weeks. And I presume, I'd just like either Superintendent Johnson or Kim to just confirm for us that those discussions that you're talking about are going to be ongoing and are going to be, there is going to be flexibility to change, perhaps even before school starts if the situation arises, and certainly after.
Right. So, but is there, is there assurances that we, that we will, that we will be involved in those processes if we approve tonight? That's what I'm, I'm just kind of wondering is like, do we have to set a timeframe now? Or does that just happen later?
Sure. So I, again, we can, we can just ask for that assurance from Superintendent Johnson or from the executive team right now. And then we, you can, I don't mean, I just wanted to, like, take your questions sort of step by step if we could. So Superintendent Johnson?
Yes.
It's about as simple as it gets there, Commissioner Zer. Is that, is that a satisfactory answer for you?
For, yes, midnight, yeah, it's a great answer. Thank you. Um, and additionally, I, we heard a lot of feedback from first and second grade teachers. And I think we alluded to this, um, tonight. But I felt really uncomfortable voting for this model, knowing that, that we're asking first and second grade teachers to potentially take on more risk. But I think what I heard and Kim said that the space mining efforts would be that we would actually spread those kids out. So we're not asking first and second grade teachers to be in a classroom with their full class. Um, but if that is the case, if we can't find staffing or the spacing doesn't work out, um, we will, we will reevaluate that plan, correct? We're not going to be asking our first and second grade staff to be in full classrooms.
No, no, we, we are required to follow physical distancing. So their entire class will not fit in their classroom and still be physically distant.
Okay.
Clements, and then Dr. Johnson.
Uh, I was going to make a friendly, seek a friendly amendment to the motion. Um, in that masks are required, um, for all those who are able to utilize them.
So, again, I hate to, Robert's Rules is, I think it's actually probably going to be better to just propose an amendment, uh, so that we can have some discussion on it. Because I don't know that we've fully discussed. I, I feel like Superintendent Johnson, you expressed that perhaps the, the, having it as a requirement may not be what the administration wants. And I, I don't know that, so I may ask Commissioner Clements for you to just propose it as a, as an amendment, rather than trying to just quickly slide by it. Because I think there might be some more discussion that needs to be had there.
Um, yes.
So Commissioner Clements says, I'm going to take this as a motion to amend the motion on the table to require masking. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
So now we are free to discuss the, whether masking should be required or, uh, not, Commissioner Bika, go ahead, or Dr. Bika, excuse me, go ahead.
Um, one possibility that weaves together a couple of things that people are saying is to have to feature this as an agenda item on remaining board meetings coming up to the start of the school year. And we could opt to specifically talk about masks at the next meeting.
Thank you. Other comments or questions that, to me, seems a very reasonable? You know, we can make that adjustment. We have, you know, roughly six weeks prior to school. We can make that adjustment if need be as we go.
This discussion is about the amendment that was proposed by Commissioner Clements, is that correct? This is where we-
This would be, this would be the, it's been moved and seconded that we add, uh, making masks a requirement to approving the proposal by the administration. Uh, so, yeah, we're just talking about, we're just talking about whether or not we should make masks a requirement. Dr. Bika has proposed that we perhaps consider that at a different time, since we have time to make that particular adjustment and we put it on as an agenda item for perhaps next time. Just looking for other comments before we call that particular vote.
Dr. Nordin, can I have a comment?
Of course.
Um, I would really like to, as I stated before in the, the direction from, um, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, they, um, you know, they, they suggested that no, uh, not to make any policy changes. However, if you do, be very careful. So that's where, like I had shared with, uh, with the, um, with the board and our audience tonight, is that I would really, because the principals and the APs are on the front lines of, of, of procedure in enforcing policy, I'd really like to get their input, um, starting tomorrow and follow it up with Mandy Van Vliet's, um, operations group with principals and policy on Wednesday when she meets. Um, that would, that would cause me to have a little more comfort that way. But we know that that's going to be discussed. I've got it probably underlined about four or five times here in regard to masks and, and policy.
Go ahead, Commissioner Clements.
I, I'm willing to withdraw my motion at Lori's suggestion that it be an agenda item, uh, at some point before school starts in the fall.
That sounds good. Commissioner Harder, is that okay with you?
Yes.
All right, the motion is then withdrawn. Uh, so we're back to now considering approval of the proposal that we've been discussing here for a lot of time. Uh, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I would, I would first like to, I would first like to start off thinking the, uh, the task force. I would like to think, uh, uh, the feedback and then the assistance from city and county health officials. And I, I realize this decision that will be made tonight will not satisfy, uh, everyone, especially those who find themselves either all virtual or all face-to-face. But I, I'm, I'm also challenged with this idea that I am removing, uh, my personal vested interest of having, uh, two children in the school district as well as having a, a wife that's employed in the school district as well. And given the, uh, 59 emails I have received over the last couple of weeks and the, the files that have just trickled in, um, I'm, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of a hybrid model. Uh, I'm not in favor of the instructional model that's, uh, been proposed. And, uh, you know, I think despite the executive team's, uh, insistence that this is a framework and, uh, various implements will be put into place, there's so, so much uncertainty, uh, about moving forward. But there's also the idea that whatever is designed will change by the start of the, uh, by the start of the academic year. And I, I, I think for me overwhelmingly, what I've, uh, I've received feedback from, from, from families as it relates to this integrated, uh, integrated model is the, uh, just the lack of practicality, especially for those families who find themselves, uh, both, uh, parents working, uh, even I was, I was, uh, uh, moved by some of our teacher slash parents, the, uh, the impractical nature of the instructional model for, uh, for them to be able to do their job. And also the concerns that come into the online learning platform when we realize that both, uh, uh, if we look at national data, uh, parents were spending a lot more time on these online platforms trying to instruct their children than, than teaching. I'm also troubled by, uh, national data and even our, our, our own data that was, didn't come out, uh, tonight, that, uh, our, uh, high schoolers, uh, were disengaged from the online process realm. And that disengagement does not set a, a good precedent in their preparation for, uh, not only adulthood, but the, uh, securing of, uh, post-high school life. And so, uh, for those, for those reasons, I will not actually be able to support, uh, uh, the instructional model as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any other comments? Any other discussion regarding the motion to approve before the question is called? Seeing none, I will then call the question. And, uh, Maida, if you would do a roll call for us.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Given the motion carries, uh, all right, you, uh, Commissioner Clements was asking about, uh, ways to set you free to do that work and to think creatively about how to get equity in this particular system. You now have that, that freedom. Make it so. Our next item in the agenda then is request for future agenda items. We already have had one regarding, uh, discussion more about whether or not masks should be required or just strongly recommended.
I, uh, I would like to, I would like to add, I would, uh, request, could you give me the specific date of our next, uh, meeting in August?
Uh, yes, it's the first Monday in August, uh, the 3rd of August.
So, uh, I, I request a status update on the instructional model that was just approved with all, uh, avenues that were presented. Do you have an update in terms of how that has been made?
That's a great idea. That was exactly what I was going to say as well. So, yes, I'm, we'll, we'll expect an update on the progress of, as a, I guess, a committee report essentially. Uh, other agenda items, Commissioner Zer?
I'm sorry, I'm accidentally unmuted. I know, I have nothing.
Commissioner Lyons?
I'm sorry, no comment.
Yeah, we've all gotten to the accidentally unmuted section of the evening. Uh, given that, I would be happy at 12:02 AM gulp to request a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We'll take the double motion as a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? As we close, I want to thank those of you that, uh, joined us. At one point, we were at over 550 people watching. That speaks volumes to our community and the interest in this decision. Thank you so much to our executive and administration team uh, for staying up this late with us to work through all of these questions. And thank you, Commissioners, for your participation tonight. The teamwork has been impressive. Uh, agenda setting will be at, uh, 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. Uh, we will see you all, we'll see at least some of you then. Good night. Good morning.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.